Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. Always good to see a near-capacity crowd. You must not have heard about our three budget meetings that we had where there were more seats available. But, welcome to all of you tonight. I'll start the meeting with the roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Mueller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. And I would ask if we could have Mr. Dave Means, who's in the audience with us, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dave, I forgot to tell you that when you're the first one here, you get called on for the pledge. So, thank you. We have our agenda presented. I don't believe we have any changes. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Whoever pushed the button first.
(inaudible). That's my fault. Who is the motion?
I moved.
Thank you.
And I believe it was Councilmember Mueller that seconded. We're just getting our electronics to work here. Please vote.
There's going to be a little white box in the way that I have to get rid of.
But we know that that passed unanimously.
Yes, we do.
Okay. And you'll work on that. Thank you. Next up, we have two proclamations that it is my pleasure to present. The first one is a proclamation in recognition of Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is officially this Friday, June 7th. But I know we have several folks here in the audience. I see a lot of snuck in here at the last minute. So I invite whomever is going to join us at the podium to please come down and join me at the podium to receive the proclamation. (inaudible) Don't just make me go up there. I think everyone in the shirt better get up here. Don't be so far away now. Come on. You have to be in the same camera. Come on. No, no, no. None of this. Now, we have room over here because we've got cameras up here where people are watching. So, I don't know. What is this? Come on. Come on. Nope. There we go. All right. There, that's better. So this is a proclamation in recognition of National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas the town of Yountville joins the nation in observing the fifth annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor the lives of more than 30,000 Americans killed each year by gun violence and the countless other lives that have been impacted. Whereas Hadiah Pendleton, a 15-year-old high school student in Chicago, Illinois, was shot and killed one week after performing in President Barack Obama's second inaugural parade in 2013. Orange is the color that Hadiah's friends wore to honor her and to raise awareness about gun violence. The color was selected because of its tradition representing gun safety and has inspired the national Wear Orange movement that promotes gun sense and safety. Whereas on March 9th, 2018, the Napa Valley community was changed forever when three brave women who had dedicated their lives to providing mental health services for military veterans lost their lives to gun violence. Just eight months later, Elena Housley, a young shining light in our community, was one of 12 people killed by a gunman while out with friends in Thousand Oaks, California. Whereas we also remember the families, friends, and colleagues who have been impacted by these acts of gun violence. We support them as they live as gun violence survivors and advocate on their behalf to reduce and hopefully eliminate gun violence in our neighborhoods and places of work. And whereas as Mayor of the town of Yountville, I joined Mayors Against Illegal Guns to stand with the Napa Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, Every Town for Gun Safety, and other organizations committed to ending gun violence and building safer communities. That's my pin and that's my color. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 7th, 2019, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Yountville and encourage all our citizens to wear orange in support of gun safety. And so, I got through that, barely. And I know, Liz, that you're going to have some words, but if your photographer's back there? So now you really have to come over here and take a photo.
(inaudible).
Yeah, come on. There, ready to hold that? (inaudible). You just get to walk in at the end. So you have to get down here and get low in the middle in the front there. That's your punishment. Don't block the proclamation.
Well, she's pregnant, so we're going to have her be right up here.
I'll get down here.
Okay.
Thank you all so much for the opportunity to be here this evening as a member of Napa Moms Demand Action and a Speak for Safety lead in Napa County. I thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and the Yountville Town Council for lending your voice and support in recognition of National Gun Violence Awareness Day here in the town of Yountville. Sadly, like thousands of communities across the United States, we are not immune to the tragic reality of gun violence. Perhaps the most prominent in our community memory is the March 9th, 2018 shooting that took place at the Pathway Home on the Veterans Campus, just a stone's throw from here, an incident of which I am one of these surviving staff members. I was an outgoing staff member at the Pathway Home when the unimaginable events of that day took place at mine and a fellow coworker's going-away party. On that day, the mayor and the town staff sheltered those of us that the gunman had released while we waited for the worst news imaginable. It was an extremely difficult day, and mine and my fellow coworkers and our family that joined us here were immensely appreciative of the efforts that Mayor Dunbar and the town staff went to that day, the next day, and the next day to support us as we came together to try to figure out how to make sense of what happened and how to support one another and move forward. They continued their extraordinary support through the through the remembrance ceremony that we had in memory of our three brave women. I still feel the effects of that day in a variety of ways, if you can't tell by the color of my face now while talking about this issue. My life and my family's lives are forever altered, and that is a big part of the reason that I am here today. Eight months later, as you heard Mayor Dunbar say earlier, our community was struck again by gun violence with the loss of Napa native Elena Housley to the November 2018 shooting at the Borderline Bar and Grill in Thousand Oaks, California. This incident and the Pathway Home incident are considered mass shootings. These are the kinds of shootings that receive copious amounts of media coverage. We saw that again last week with yet another mass shooting incident, this time in Virginia Beach. And yet, all across the country, there are communities in which gun violence is a daily occurrence. In Chicago alone, a staggering 100 of our fellow Americans were shot in the past two weekends. We do not have to live like this, and we need the support and action of community members and our elected officials more than ever. I and my fellow mothers and others in Napa Moms Demand Action need your help to spread the word on gun violence prevention issues, whether it be on the Be Smart program about safe storage of guns in the home, or the Speak for Safety program that seeks to educate members of the public about California's Gun Violence Restraining Order law, which can provide for the temporary removal of guns from the home of someone who is deemed by a court to be a danger to themselves or others, or even if it's joining us on June 29th here in town for the Second Annual Gun Violence Prevention Ride. We do not have the luxury of inaction, and so on behalf of Napa Moms Demand Action, I once again want to thank Mayor Dunbar and the Yountville Town Council for recognizing the need for Yountville to join together with other communities in proclaiming June 7th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Liz, I would say that you held it together and did a better job than I did, and I'm up here every two weeks. So, thank you very much for your words and sharing that. And all of you that are here advocating for gun safety, I hope there's a day soon that you don't need to come back and you can retire the shirts and the effort. But until then, thank you. And we're encouraging, certainly not requiring, but we're encouraging residents, town staff, any of us on Friday to wear orange in the, you know, support of the Wear Orange awareness movement as well. So, let's remember this on Friday and every day, frankly. Okay. The next proclamation is in recognition of June as LGBTQ Pride Month, and I will go ahead and read that here from the podium.
(inaudible).
Debbie. I'm going to start, so you better be ready. Okay. This is a proclamation in recognition of LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas this June marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Riots, which were a series of demonstrations by members of the gay community against a police raid that took place on June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in the Greenwich Village neighborhood of Manhattan, New York City that served as a catalyst for the gay rights movement. Whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBT Pride Flag or Gay Pride Flag, has been present since the 1970s as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender inclusiveness and social movements. Whereas many residents, veterans, students, employees, business owners, and visitors to the town of Yountville are part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community who contribute to the widespread academic, economic, artistic, and social fabric of the entire Napa Valley. Whereas June is commemorated around the globe as International Gay Pride Month to honor and celebrate the history, achievements, and contributions of LGBTQ people. Whereas the town of Yountville is committed to support and encourage diversity in the workplace and throughout the community, as stated in the town's 2009 Equal Rights Resolution. Whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, and intersex people, their families, friends, and allies come together in various celebrations of freedom and pride. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, along with the town council, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, and invite everyone to reflect on ways we all can advance the rights and protections of LGBTQ people and live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. And I sign this dated June 4th, 2019. I do just want to recognize W. Alter Starr is one of our residents that has come and spoken to the council on this issue. We have many others that have been here, and we actually expected to be here, but as luck would have it, there are many council meetings on the same night, and we believe that some of those folks are in other jurisdictions, but their message is here with us. So those are our proclamations. Now, we move on to our first public comment opportunity. This is if any of you have a comment to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. You could come forward and share with us now. Gee, I thought Joey was actually going to come up and speak. Thank you, Moms.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Would anyone like to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Oh, he's holding the door.
Eric, did you have a public comment? No, I'm going to be good. I think I'm going to be good.
Okay. Then we'll move ahead to our consent calendar. We have four items, seven A, B, C, and D. If there is no question or an item to pull, is there action to be taken on the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar items.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. There's no white box in the way this time. Five-zero, that passes. Thank you very much. We will get on to our presentation for this evening. It is a presentation by the Yountville Chamber of Commerce presenting their annual report. Welcome.
All right. Good evening.
You can raise that podium up too with that button.
Oh, yeah, I can use the button.
Yeah.
Nice.
It's a full crowd. We have to show how we can raise the podium.
Yeah.
That's it.
That was a great investment, yes. I would agree.
Just keep it down back there, please.
Great. Well, Mayor Dunbar, council members, thank you so much for having me here tonight for our yearly Yountville Chamber of Commerce update. Actually, can I, can we start that from the beginning, actually? No. That's okay. So, yeah. Thank you so much for having me tonight. So, it's an honor, of course, to come every year and to give an update on the Yountville Chamber of Commerce activities for the last year. For those of you that may not realize, we partner with the town of Yountville and the local TID to do marketing efforts, and I'm going to give a summary of that for this evening. So, yeah, that's the first slide. Perfect. That's okay. Yeah, no worries. Got it? Great. So, let me see if I can advance it from there, and we just try that. Technology is our best friend until it's not.
Right.
Perfect. Okay, great. That's okay. Doesn't seem to be wanting to work.
Is it not going?
It does not seem to want to work.
I'll help you out.
Okay, great. So, here we are, page one. Okay, great. So, you can advance this slide too. Thank you. Okay, great. So, our presentation overview for this evening. So, we're going to give an overview of what the Yountville Chamber of Commerce does. We're also going to talk about our accomplishment highlights for the past year, as well as a summary of our marketing for the destination, which we partner with the town and the TID on, and then a quick look at what's next for us in the coming year. Great. So, Yountville Chamber of Commerce overview. Go ahead, you can go. Great. So, what does the Yountville Chamber of Commerce do? So, the easiest way I can explain it is we wear two hats. We're a traditional Chamber of Commerce, which means we do networking opportunities for our members, economic development. We also provide member resources and educational opportunities and marketing opportunities for our business members. And then we also do destination marketing. This is unique and something that some of the other towns in Napa Valley do, including Calistoga, St. Helena, and American Canyon. Most large cities have their own destination marketing organization, like Visit Napa Valley, but because we're a small municipality, the town decided to partner with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce to manage those efforts for them, which is wonderful. It actually works out really well. It's something that we talk a lot about, the term leadership alignment, the combination of multiple agencies working together for the betterment of the community. And we're proud to serve in that role for the town and the TID. Great. Wonderful. So, our vision and mission. So, our vision as an organization is to be the premier small-town destination, which is outwardly focused on our community, and our mission is enriching the vibrancy of our community. Neither one of these is self-serving to the Chamber of Commerce itself. It's all about the greater community of Yountville and beyond. Great. So, our four key values. Our four key values drive everything that they do. It's our heart and soul. They are, they drive everything. So, building a thriving community. So that's all about the interconnectedness between our businesses and our associate members, which are our resident members here in Yountville. And of course, building a thriving community throughout the valley. Being your champion. This is advocating for our businesses and our business community for a strong economic community here in Yountville. And driving commerce. So, this is driving visitation, business to our town, and then promoting Yountville, which falls into the destination marketing side. So, promoting Yountville as a small-town destination. Go ahead to the next one. Thanks, Joe. Okay, so our Chamber Board of Directors. So, we currently have 12 members of our Board of Directors, those here with us tonight. Richard Hall is our board chair. Shane Soldinger with Silver Trident Winery, he's our vice chair. Steve Rogers is our treasurer, and Julie Sekvier is our secretary, and she's with Thomas Keller Restaurant Group. We have a small but mighty board. It's purposely kept small. We're really engaged and supportive of our activities, and they really set the strategic direction for the organization, and staff is really carrying out the daily tactics and goals to achieve those strategies. Great. Great. So, our organization chart. So, you'll see we're governed by our executive committee and our Board of Directors, and I head up the staff. And Elizabeth Heacock is our Director of Membership and Sales. She's here with us this evening. And Jessica Pemben, our Operations and Membership Manager. And then, of course, we have our Welcome Center volunteers that fall under Jessica and our Chamber ambassadors, which are two strong volunteer groups with us. We have Reich and Associates, who manages all of our bookkeeping and accounting for the Chamber and helps us with good governance and financial policy. And then Allison Day, she is our social media contractor. She handles all of our posts on social media. And then Fuller and Sander Communications is our PR company of record. Our Chamber membership. So, we currently have 261 business members and 72 associate members. Business members are wineries, restaurants, hotels, et cetera. And then our associate members are our Yountville residents, and we also have some residents in Napa that are also associate members. So, this is a really cool thing and unique to our chamber. Most chambers don't have memberships for the residents, but we love it. We're such a small community, and it's a fun way to keep us all interconnected. So if I'm doing that math right, that's 333 members right now. Okay, accomplishments highlights. Great, you can go to the next one. Thank you. Okay, great. So I've broken these down into the four different categories that are our key values. So, building a thriving community. So one of the most important things the Chamber of Commerce can do is build an interconnected web of connections between not only residents but businesses and then beyond. So I have three examples of how we've done that in the last year. So, our Chamber of Commerce networking mixers, if you've ever been to a networking mixer, one, they're a lot of fun, but it's also a way to help build connections and relationships and hopefully business with one another. We've had over 1,200 attendees so far in the last 10 months, and both businesses and residents attend those mixers. We have our Associate Member Program, which I mentioned, is the program that is for our residents, and we do a number of different aspects with that program. We have an Associate Member Committee that helps drive kind of the overall arching program itself. And one of the things that we've started to look at in the last year is creating community partnerships. So in this past year, we've partnered with Yountville Kiwanis Club, and this is a picture of the folks at the roadside cleanup, where they collected a bunch of trash and beautified our town. It's been a great partnership for us so far. We also helped out with the Yountville Cemetery cleanup. So it's an opportunity for our members to give back to our community. And then our Vets Lunch, we're all very familiar with our Vets Lunch. That's the Celebrity Chef Veterans Day Luncheon that takes place every year. This is a beautiful collaboration and a really good example of building a thriving community between our Yountville Veterans Home, our Yountville residents, Yountville chefs, and of course, the Chamber. So, we work with Bob Hurley and the Yountville chefs to prepare a gourmet meal to our veterans, which we served over 900 veterans last year, and we had over 60 volunteers help serve that meal and also bus and clean the dining room. I know many of you have been. It's an absolutely touching event, and this year will be our 15th year. And that event, of course, was started by my predecessor Cindy Saucerman and Bob Hurley. So, it's pretty cool. And Bob's in for this year, for those of you that are wondering. Okay, next slide. Thank you. So, being your champion. We passed the general plan in May, which I know everyone was very excited about. So we were proud to represent the voice of business during those last two years, ensuring that the balance remains between our business community and our residents here in town. That's something that's very important to all of us, and we take very seriously. And I feel like the workshops that we participated in over the last two years really enabled us to get that right. And then the Napa HIP, and that is the Napa Hospitality Industry Partnership. It is a group of business and community leaders working together to solve the issue of workforce development here in Napa Valley. So, for us, that means focusing on education. What type of resources and tools are we providing to our students and also our lifelong learners to find careers in the hospitality industry? And then what type of resources do our businesses need, and the training do they need for future employees to be employed in those businesses? We started taking over the facilitation of this group in January. We're having our third meeting next week, actually, and we're currently working on developing an Art of the Hospitality class, which is where we can train anyone who wants to participate on the elevated hospitality experience. So think French Laundry, Metawood, and the goal there is try to elevate all of Napa Valley's customer service and guest experience. And then, of course, public policy. So, working to represent the voice of business on various issues. We're going to talk a little bit later about by the glass by the bottle, and hopefully next month about parking in Yountville. But one of the things I wanted to call out specifically was our efforts to support the Yes on Workforce Housing Initiative that was passed by Yountville and four of our communities and the county back in November. We endorsed that initiative. We helped promote it and raise awareness on the importance of supporting workforce housing here in our town and beyond. And driving commerce. Great. So, this year we created a retail committee, which is made up of all the retail businesses in Yountville. Whether or not they were members or not of the Chamber, that didn't matter, but the idea was just to foster connection between those businesses. Some of them didn't even know each other. They'd never met, but this was an opportunity for us to start working together and hopefully for them to drive business to the other retailers. One of the first things that we did was partner together on Shop Small Saturday, which took place on November 24th of 2018. This was the first time Yountville participated in the National American Express campaign. This was driven by the retailers and Chamber staff. Heavily marketed, we had really great participation for our first one. They were all in to do it again, so much so that we are doing a summer shop-small sidewalk sale in July, on July 20th. So you will be hearing about that very shortly. It's a great opportunity for us to support local businesses, and we all know that local businesses can't survive without our local support. So, look for more fun and exciting things from the retail committee. And then our educational seminars. So, we hosted four different free marketing seminars for our business members and associate members over the winter, and the topics that we focus on are different things that they can use to improve their business. So, for example, for one of the seminars, we did search engine optimization training. So, how do I get my website to appear at the top of Google? What do I need to do in my website to make that happen? So, we taught our members how to do that, and then they can take those skills back to their business and help improve their marketing of their business to drive more business to them. So they've been extremely successful. We've had over 80 attendees over the four different seminars, and we're currently planning for next year. We focused on marketing mostly, and that's been pretty successful for us, so I think we'll kind of stay in that category. And then the Y Committee, which is the Wine Hospitality of Yountville Committee, which is made up of all of our tasting rooms here in town, our wine shops, and then our surrounding wineries. And one of the big initiatives we had this year was creating a packet of information for our concierges throughout Napa Valley. So what we did is we created a packet that covered all of the different tasting rooms in town. There's a one sheet of piece of paper for every single tasting room here in town that talks about their hours of operation, what wine they serve, how much their tastings are, what special events they have coming up. And the whole idea is when a guest comes to a concierge and says, "What should I do this weekend?", they can go ahead and flip through the packet and say, "Why don't you go to Yountville and go to Jessup Sellers and go to the Art House Sessions?". So, it's a way for those concierges to have the information at their fingertips to have people come to Yountville. We also added all of the retail businesses in there, too. So, the idea is that we're continuing to kind of spread the word in new and different ways, and that's been extremely successful. It's hand-delivered by members of the Y Committee every other month to those concierges. So, also a great way for them to create relationships with those other businesses. Great. And then promoting Yountville. I'm going to go into all of our marketing efforts in the next couple slides, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things here that are really fun. So, we worked with the town of Yountville to create these promotional banners that are going to go up through town. They So also a great way for them to create relationships with those other businesses. Great. And then promoting Yountville. I'm going to go into all of our marketing efforts in the next couple of slides, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things here that are really fun. So we worked with the Town of Yountville to create these promotional banners that are going to go up through town. They will be four different designs: sip, stroll, shop, and dine. And the idea is that they will hold the place when there aren't other banners hanging. So like right now, we have our Fourth of July banners. We'll have the holiday banners, and these will be in between. So just another fun way to promote our destination. And then our walking maps. So our Yountville walking map is really great. We printed over 20,000 copies and have distributed over 20,000 copies in the last year. We hand these out at the Yountville Welcome Center, and then all of our businesses in town also have them. The Yountville Community Center has them. You guys have them here. And that's just an easy way for our visitors to say, "Okay, here I am at Jessup Sellers. How do I get to Hill Family?". And you can walk along there, and also promotes the Yountville Trolley, which is fun. And then lastly on this page, the Arts Sip and Stroll banners. So we partnered with the Arts Commission and the Arts Sip and Stroll Planning Committee. Samantha Holland, thank you very much for helping with this to create the banner that you see there. They were hung just in time for Arts Sip and Stroll this year, so that was another collaboration between the Town, the TID, and the Chamber. And then, marketing the destination of Yountville. Fantastic. There you go. Perfect. So these are the different aspects that we currently manage for the Town of Yountville. We manage the Yountville Welcome Center, the Yountville TripAdvisor page, yountville.com. We manage our public relations firm, our social media marketing, Yountville Events, and the digital marketing campaign. So first, the Yountville Welcome Center. If you haven't been, we're right next to Proteo. We're really fun. We're staffed by 34 volunteers, and they are truly wonderful. We are open seven days a week, 10 to 5. Come see us. And in the last year, we had over 63,000 referrals to members of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. We have members from San Francisco to Calistoga, and we had over 20,000 visitors visit the Yountville Welcome Center. We still consider the Yountville Welcome Center a core part of our marketing strategy. We consider ourselves the living room and welcome mat for Yountville. When visitors first come to us, they really have no idea where they are. And our volunteers are really great about explaining the Napa Valley and explaining why Yountville is so special, and we really value that opportunity. It's a great way for us to promote our town. And yountville.com. So this is the digital welcome mat for our town. If you haven't been to our website, it's absolutely beautiful. We are currently going through a refresh as well to freshen it up a little bit. Over the last year, we had 152,000 people visit our website, which is really good for our destination, and we're working on spreading the word on our website, and you'll see that in just a little bit. You'll see most of our visitors are from California. That's pretty typical for us. And then Texas, of course, being the second-largest state that we have visitors come through. On this graph here, that's by visitors by month, and you'll see October through April is kind of where we see the most visitation, and that's really driven by our destination marketing advertising campaign, which I'll talk about in a second. And we are driving a lot of website traffic during that time, and that's considered quite the slow season, right? So that's what we focus on. You know, our businesses tend to be busier in May through September, so we're really focusing on that true time when business is a little bit slower to drive traffic to our website into town. Great. And then social media. So you'll see our social media followers there up on the screen. If you're not following us, our handles are there, so now you have no excuse. We do a really great job of social media. We're posting on Facebook every single day, multiple times a day, Instagram every day, Twitter three times a day, and retweeting two times a day. So we're very active. This is a core part of our marketing strategy. A lot of inspiration for traveling to a destination is still derived from social media. So when you see a beautiful picture on Instagram of Bali, you're like, "I gotta go to Bali". So we're trying and successfully replicating that strategy on Instagram, and of course, more member-focused content on Facebook. And then that's, of course, part of our overall strategy, is promoting our members through Facebook and the other two channels, and of course, driving traffic to our website. We want to get people to our website so they can learn more about the destination, and of course, building the Yountville brand. It's important for our channels to be seen as a credible source for Yountville information, which they are, which is great. Okay, so here's the destination marketing campaign I was referencing earlier. We currently work with an agency called Marion Carson to do this. They do visit California's destination marketing, as well as visit Napa Valley. We are very lucky to have them help us with this. So we focus on three different categories here: Facebook and Instagram, Google Display Network, those are the little ads that follow you around on the internet, and then Google AdWords. So when you see Stuart Sellers and a little ad up there on the top of your Google search, that's a Google AdWord. So far, it's been incredibly successful for us. This is our second year doing this. We had never done anything like this before. This is big time playing. We spent about $100,000 on this last year, and we're currently partnering with the TID to hopefully run this campaign again next year. So second year of this campaign, and you can see the results there. 35 million impressions for this campaign. It ran October 1 through April 30, and you saw that spike in the website traffic there. You'll see 83,000 clicks to yountville.com. So no doubt that it's paying off. It's showing the Yountville brand well. It's exposing people to the Yountville brand, which is important as they're starting to make their travel plans and research what Yountville's all about. And then, of course, hopefully then they're coming to our website to learn more about our destination. Okay, great. And then TripAdvisor. So we are participating in the Premium Partner Destination Program with TripAdvisor. We spend $20,000 a year with them to promote Yountville and its brand. So you'll see for our page, we had 84,000 page views and 738 banner impressions, 1,000 banner impressions, and you'll see the selection of our banners right there. So we're promoting our Yountville hotels and then our different arts institutions. So we partner with the TID on this as well, and so far, this has been a very successful place for us. Believe it or not, TripAdvisor is still number one or number two destination that people go to research a trip before they go. Not so much do it while they're in-market, but before they go, they go to TripAdvisor. So we look to continue that partnership in the next year as well. And then Public Relations. So like I said, we work with Fuller and Sander Communications. They also work with Visit Napa Valley for PR. And in the last year, we had 16 different journalists visit Yountville specifically and write about our town. You'll see over 340 million impressions of Yountville. Those are the four largest news agencies that Yountville and its businesses were mentioned in. And then last, a couple of weeks ago, we were featured on Bay Area Life, Yountville segment on the Yountville Art Walk and the Yountville Wine Walk. If you haven't seen it yet, it's super fun. Noel, one of our arts commissioners, she actually went on the tour with Joel Riddle, and it's super fun and promotes one of the things that's most dear to many of us here in town, which is our art. So that was really cool to do. You can go to ABC7 and go to Bay Area Life to see that. It's still up on their page. And then Yountville Events. So the last part of our efforts for marketing is our key events. So three that I'm talking about tonight are Holidays in Yountville, which of course takes place from November 18th to December 31st last year. Six weeks of holiday fun, events, programs, activities, something for everybody, kids, families. The picture you see there is from our Town and Tree Lighting, which was a smashing success. Super fun. That's where we turn on the lights in town. And we have been focused on spending a significant amount of marketing dollars around this campaign to drive commerce to Yountville during those six weeks. As people are having their families in town, we want to make sure that Yountville is a great destination for them to come and enjoy different stuff with our businesses. And then the Yountville International Short Film Festival was in its second year this year. Over 100 films over four days. This is a really cool, unique thing. They also have this, our partner, Short Film Festival, is in San Jose, and Bill, their Executive Director, does a great job curating the content and making it feel like Yountville. We're proud to partner with them on this event. It's really unique for us and pretty cool. And then, of course, Yountville Live and Taste of Yountville, which we've been doing Taste of Yountville for 26 years now. And we partner with Live in the Vineyard Company on producing those events, and we still heavily oversee the strategic direction and execution of what they're doing. This year, they pared everything back, scaled everything back to be more Yountville appropriate, not so large, and for the first time ever, they sold out of everything. So I think they really kind of hit their stride this year. This is the fifth year that they've kind of taken over it from us. So we look forward to this next year and them continuing to develop an event that feels like Yountville, represents Yountville, and of course, brings a lot of business to Yountville. Okay, what's next? My favorite phrase. The last slide. Awesome. Okay, great. So we're in year two of our three-year strategic plan. We've never really had a strategic plan before, but these are our five objectives. So the five objectives stay the same over the three years, and our tactics and goals rotate each year. So they evolve as we evolve. So these five tactics, similar to what I talked about earlier about what a Chamber does, these mirror that. So generate positive impact for Yountville and the surrounding community, so that's all about economic development. Nurture and cultivate productively mutually beneficial relationships with stakeholders. It's all about care of our members, providing great customer service, making sure that they have the resources to thrive. Run an effective and sustainable business. So making sure that the Chamber runs as a well-oiled machine and organization, we're financially sustainable and responsible. Exceed visitor expectations, making sure that we're providing the best destination possible and experience for our visitors. And then influence the long-term direction of Yountville and its brand. We are committed to the long-term health of our town and our community and our partnership with the Town and the TID to make sure that we accomplish that. And with that, I thank you for your partnership and your support, and greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments from the council on the presentation?
Well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. I'd just like to say kudos. I'm looking here at the visitors by age. You all have done a really good job of cutting that pie in pretty equal pieces, so thank you, because I know that's very important to our competitive stance. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Our competitive set of 25 to 54 is like our sweet spot for visitors. That's what we see throughout the Napa Valley, and that's reflective of what we see here in town as well.
And I'll just comment on the energy, the vibrancy, and the participation that you and your team have brought to our business community. When I have attended events or meetings, even 8 o'clock, 8:30 in the morning, the rooms are at capacity, and there are faces there that we did not used to see. And we see a lot of those faces here tonight. There is an engagement that we are seeing with our business partners, many of whom are locals, that is really refreshing and encouraging, but we know it takes a lot of work, and you drill it down to a few, you know, slides in a deck here, and you sit here quietly, Elizabeth and Jessica, as you soak it all in. We know how much that you all put in and all the volunteers put in to make all of that happen. So thank you on behalf of the whole community and the council, so.
Thank you. It's truly our pleasure, and it really is a team effort, and we couldn't do it without our partnership with the Town and with the TID and with my amazing staff and with our amazing volunteers, and with our business and community support. I mean, it truly is a family, and we love it. So thank you.
And you even get your Board of Director members in here for the meeting. I'm very impressed with those of you that are here.
Yes. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the reason I know you're all here, which is the Yountville Park Undergrounding Utility Zone. Presentation. Yeah, if you didn't read the agenda, I got you. I think, Joe, you're going to kick this off.
Got to have your veggies before you get your dessert, Mayor.
That's right. We commit to this being a pretty brief item, but it is a public hearing that we need to have.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, tonight I have for your consideration a resolution to adopt an undergrounding and create and adopt an underground zone or district. This is done through a program with PG&E known as Rule 20A, and for the past five years that I've been here, we have received a small amount of money, as do most communities, to build a fund balance to allow for some undergrounding of utilities as required by the state. We get on average about $15,000 to $17,000 a year. Currently, we have about $174,000 in that fund. PG&E generally won't even participate and start helping you to underground the utilities until you reach around a $500,000 minimum. So we're still a ways away from that. However, there has been some changes in the recent law that allow other communities who are much closer than us to borrow or procure our funds, funds that are directed towards us, just a small amount. We started off this year with this very small town in the Central Valley, taking about $599 from us, and we thought, "Well, that's not very much", and we received a call from PG&E, our PG&E Rule 20A rep, and she informed us that this was going to become more of a feature than had been in the past, and that we should probably create an underground district to stop further reduction of our funds. So that's what we're doing tonight. This fund is really just, this program that we're proposing tonight is really to just head off those other agencies that were trying to basically consume our funds. So no real plans in the very near future. This is more of a long-distance program. Should we have a partner that would come forward and want to underground, or should we suddenly find the need to underground, then we would have the district created and it would eliminate that need. But other than that, we don't have any real plans to propose an undergrounding project in the next several years. Nothing on the five-year plan certainly, or even the 10-year plan at this point. There was some, there were a few questions about the participation of some of the homes or businesses and what kind of a stipend that would be. We don't know what PG&E or the utilities would be required to provide when we do the undergrounding district, so we provided the number $1,500 because that's what's allowed now. But we don't know what would be provided going forward, so that's just something to kind of put in the map today and give you an idea of what it's going to look like going forward. But other than that, we don't have any plans to do any undergrounding. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And before I formally open the public hearing, are there questions from the council about the staff report? Seeing none, I'll...
Where's the city of Live Oak?
Down in the Central Valley, it's close to Riverbank.
Oh, so that's why they're...
Oakdale, kind of down in the Central Valley, Modesto, in that area.
So formally open the public hearing, and anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this or ask a question, like, "Why are we talking about this?". Because we have to, because other cities will take our money if we don't. Seeing no one move forward, I'll close the public hearing and invite action by the council. There's no further discussion.
Mayor, council, community, I do want to just amplify what the Public Works Director was saying. This has been predetermined by prior council actions as a priority area at some point for utility undergrounding, and it's generally an area that is constrained by Yountville community parks. So we felt that it was a logical, specific enough area that we would do it, but I want to make sure everybody realizes that it was on the predetermined prioritization list by council policy for utility undergrounding, which is one of the reasons that's on the list.
I think there was another question on, "Does this preclude any other underground districts from being created?", and it does not, just to clarify.
Great, thank you.
Do you have one question now? Sorry.
All right, so as part of the discussion, so I don't have to reopen the hearing, but yes, Councilor Doran Becker.
So does that mean that, since this is the only area that we're creating of this...
Undergrounding district.
Undergrounding district. Does that mean that we couldn't underground in any other?
No, no, that's why I was, and I may not have clarified that adequately. This does not preclude us from creating other underground districts, large or small, to underground other areas that we may see a need for, or that the community may say, "We want to underground this area", and then we would be able to create that district as well.
But this protects us from other municipalities coming in and taking that money.
Correct. This is really just using the area that has been identified by policy and giving us a resolution to protect that money from being taken by other agencies.
Thank you, Joe.
Until we have a significant enough amount of money, it almost doesn't matter which zone we're talking about. This is just, this is to get one on the books, basically.
This is just a vehicle to protect that account. That's correct.
Okay. If there isn't any other discussion, is there a motion to be had on this item?
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number 19-3560, establishing the Yountville Park Underground Utility Zone We adopt Resolution Number 19-3560, establishing the Yountville Park Underground Utility Zone pursuant to Chapter 13.104 of the Yountville Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, please vote. That passes unanimously also. Thank you very much. Okay. This one might be more what some of you, especially on this side of the room, I think, the way I'm looking at it, are interested in. Our next item, public hearing, is potential municipal code amendment. So this is the introduction of that amendment.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you a request by the Yountville Chamber of Commerce to revise the definitions in the Yountville Municipal Code for wine tasting room and to eliminate the definition for wine tasting bar. And the request comes from chamber members, the tasting rooms, that allege that the two-ounce maximum that the town imposes by the zoning ordinance is not meeting the needs of the guests to their tasting rooms. And the chamber gives the example of groups that come to tasting rooms where one or more of the guests doesn't want to participate in wine tasting, but they would rather have a glass of wine or share a bottle amongst themselves. And the chamber stresses that this modification will allow the tasting rooms to better serve their existing clients rather than draw new customers or increase the employee count. And they reference the requirements for the other Napa Valley jurisdictions and the Sonoma County jurisdictions, none of which impose a maximum size restriction like the town of Yountville. And instead, these jurisdictions defer to the rights and privileges conferred by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for a holder of a type O2 license, and that's a duplicate license for a wine maker and it applies to all the tasting rooms in town. And those ABC rules allow guests to tasting rooms to consume wine by the glass or bottle in addition to tastings. And I'll share a history with you of how the two-ounce maximum came into effect here in Yountville. Back in 2010 and 2011, the town was looking at its definitions and how it defined uses. And at that time, we didn't have a definition for wine tasting room. At that time, it was grouped into a broader retail category in terms of determining parking count and which zoning districts it was allowed in. But given the market interest in tasting rooms that we had seen at that time, the town looked to create new definitions for wine tasting room and wine tasting bar and then to amend the definitions for bar and wine shop. And there were two reasons at that time that the town imposed a two-ounce maximum on the wine tasting pour. And the first was that wine tastings were viewed as being about education and sampling of wine. And so the definition was how we distinguished from uses that allowed consumption on-site, such as a restaurant or a bar. The second concern was that consumption would lead to impacts associated with possible inebriation, such as noise and nuisance impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods. And that's a concern for Yountville because the main street backs up to residential properties. However, now when we look at the approach of other jurisdictions, we may find that this wasn't necessarily the case, that these impacts are associated with wine tasting when it's by the glass or bottle. And so I want to stress also that if the town approves the ordinance that is before you and that is in response to the chamber request, there would be no other changes permitted at the town's tasting rooms. They will still be governed by the conditions of approval in their associated resolutions and so they will conduct wine and food pairings as allowed by those conditions as with outdoor uses and hours of operation. None of those other aspects of the business would change. We're only looking at the amount of wine that can be poured and whether that's a tasting size pour or whether they can avail themselves of the rights of the ABC to pour a glass or bottle. And we have included in the staff report, but we haven't included it in the resolution, a potential sunset provision that would allow the council to consider this as a temporary measure so that we can see if we are correct as to our assumptions on whether or not there are really impacts associated with this potential change. So I'm here to answer any questions and I know there are a lot of members in the public who may address you tonight.
Thank you. Questions on the staff report?
Will you please...
Councilor Doran Becker.
Sorry. Will you please clarify that should we make this change, it automatically applies to all of the tasting rooms or do they have to come back in individually with their user's permit to have that changed up?
It would be a code amendment, so it would apply to all the tasting rooms in town. They would not come in individually and we would not reopen up their use permits. Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice, Councilor Durham, go ahead.
I got it. Sorry.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Liston. So just to be clear, this would apply only to tasting rooms with an O2 license?
That is correct.
Wait, Gary is adding to that.
Yeah, just to clarify, it applies to all tasting rooms, but part of the requirement of being in a tasting room is that you have an O2 license? That answers the question.
Thank you. And then the employee parking management plan, does that give us, as part of that, that the participating businesses, in this case tasting rooms, give us a payroll so we keep a count of employees that they have, number of employees? Not so much as where they park, but how many employees they have?
It depends on when that business was enrolled in the program and the most recent handful of businesses, I would say the last five with RH being one of them, they are required to provide employee counts.
Okay.
Through their payroll reports.
Thank you. And then although I did read all of these use permits over the weekend, I just want to make sure, I did not see in the use permits anything about employee counts in either conditional use or use permits. Is that, am I correct about that?
Most likely, yes.
And as far as, because tasting rooms are done for parking purposes on square footage, I think the only one that I saw, the seat count, was the math we did for Priest Ranch. That's the one that pops into my mind. But typically, they're done on a square foot basis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So to follow up on that one, there's no permission being granted here to increase employees or capacity or any other activities, special events, anything that's in the conditional use permits currently, correct?
That is correct.
The only change we're talking about is the ability to add to a menu of services a full glass, roughly five ounces, or a bottle. So this isn't replacing the two-ounce pours, but it's giving the option to the business and the customer to have that experience in addition. Would there be a reason to worry about the parking management plan related to this? It doesn't, not triggering anything else, this wouldn't require now anyone that's not in the employee parking management plan to now get in that plan. Is that a fair statement?
Right. I don't, we won't be bringing in those businesses that aren't enrolled because we're not opening up their use permits, but rather we're making, we would be making an ordinance amendment.
Right.
The businesses that are enrolled in the employee parking management will continue to monitor for those that have to submit third-party payroll reports. We will monitor, so we will have some indicator of whether they're increasing the number of employees, but the assertion that they're making to us is that they don't need to.
Well, they're not allowed to currently, even if it's based on square footage, they have a maximum number of employees based on square footage, correct?
No. They have the number of employees that they represented during the time of their use permit approval and discussion and the number of employees was considered as part of the employee, as part of the total parking count and whether it was enrolled in the parking management program.
Yeah, so I think there's a step I was missing there, which is the square footage dictating the parking, the parking dictating to a degree...
Oh, right. So you're getting at, the parking standard isn't intended to capture both the guests to a business as well as the employees.
Just like a clothing store would, a shoe store...
Exactly. Restaurants, everything.
Hat company, whatever. Okay. And the change made, I don't know if you know what year ABC changed its policy, I'll call it, rule, law, whatever you want to call it. Do we know when that was?
It was about 2010, 11 when we were looking at those changes because we...
So it may have spurred the...
Right. We knew that was coming.
Consideration. Okay. So it would be fair to say that we're not looking at adding something to, it would not be a benefit necessarily, it's actually to end a restriction. Would that be a fair way to put it?
Could be put that way.
Okay. I think those are my, other than the last question, do we have any other businesses anywhere in town that have a sunset on their business operations?
No, but have we done one in the past? I think we have. I can't recall.
We have...
No, that's different than saying, we're going to review it in six months or a year. That's not what I'm talking about.
Right, right.
I'm talking about, do we have anywhere a business that we say in a year we might come back and tell you, you can't do that?
What I would say, the principle has been used where you would look at something to evaluate whether continuing it, but in terms of the current structure, the way you answered it, no. The other way I do want to point out, you asked a question about employee count. The council, up until recently, throughout its history, has never put a cap on any type of use permit for employees. Recently, with the council's support, we've been evolving, and I say evolving with the employee parking management plan because, for those of you that have been here during the duration, how we initially approached the employee parking management plan and where we're at now has evolved based on working with the businesses and what's worked. So I just want to point that out, that, you know, we don't have, for example, there is not a cap on restaurants. We don't have anything in their use permit that says they're permitted to have a maximum of X employees. Your most complete analysis that we've done recently as it deals with the employee parking management plan, excuse me, is RH. But I just want to give a little bit of history because we have a lot of evolution and there are some places that open and they will often talk in their narrative about how many employees they have, but we actually don't have a cap or a maximum or in some cases, anything where we've regulated the number of employees. I just want to kind of get that out there because it was, I saw some of the conversation going in a couple of different places there.
I want to get back to the sunset that I brought up, which is, to my knowledge, we have no business in any category that has a sunset to business operations that might be no longer allowed after a period of time. And I'm not talking about a new business where we say, we're going to review this in six months in case your special event times are too late in the evening or whatever, but is that fair to say?
That is correct. I cannot think of a single one.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead. Any other questions yet? Councilor Durham?
Thank you.
I have a question, too.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm going to exclude the people that I know have an employee parking management on this list you have in the staff report, but if you could clarify for me. Silver Trident Winery, employee parking management plan?
No.
Hope and Grace?
No.
Hill Family? No.
No. BoVine, no.
And Gerard, because they're both on, and Gerard?
Gerard, yes.
Thank you. Kiorello, inside of the marketplace?
Oh, I understand that's out of business. Or closed, closed, I'm sorry. And...
Oh, sorry.
And Heron House is one I should have added to this. They're not open yet, but they will be subject to the employee...
But they will be on there. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilor Mueller?
Thank you. I have a question for our town attorney. So we, this ABC rule change occurred, this is for argument sake, say 2010, and we decided to basically not allow it. So if we allow this now, is Yountville allowing this or are we supporting what ABC allows? So in the case they changed their mind, where are we?
Yeah, so both is the short answer.
Okay.
The town retains its local land use authority, which is the way to regulate how alcohol is used and sold here in town. ABC is a prerequisite to serving alcohol, but that doesn't waive the town's authority to regulate the specifics of how that works on the ground. So the way that the zoning code is currently written, the ABC license would technically allow more, but through the land use restrictions and your land use authority, you've chosen to restrict how that license is used. So if that license were to change, your land use restrictions would stay in effect, but if the license didn't allow a full pour, for example, they'd have to find another license that would allow it. If it were in compliance with your current code, that could still allow it, if that makes sense.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And by background, when the, in the 2009, 10, the language the council had in place was they had to have their, in compliance with the ABC license.
Right.
So we actually didn't go into all of the detail. We allowed the specifics of the ABC license to rule that. So just, that's a good clarifying question on process and structure.
So just to follow up to that, if the language returned to what it was, it was basically to be compliant with ABC regulations is roughly what it would have said. And if they change it up or down, then it would automatically have to change up or down because the ABC license would even take effect even before you get to whether we have local modifications to that.
Correct. They would have to be...
Be out of compliant of the ABC license.
They would have, you know, this is a unique situation and I'm sure the businesses would tell us, they have to be compliant with ABC and they have to be compliant with the town of Yountville. So, and in one sense, you're correct. This would simply, if ABC changes the rules, which they do periodically, but not on a major, but yes, that would be the simplicity, is tasting rooms would need to comply with whatever current and/or future ABC rules related to tasting room operations. I mean, that would be...
I think if they changed the requirement for a restroom, that would, we would still have the ability to say, no, you have to have a restroom, even though ABC, I mean, I'm just using a bad example maybe, but line of sight, hey, line of sight for, you know, watching any patrons that are consuming alcohol would maybe be a little better example.
That would be a better example and yes, I would think that would be, that would be correct. Line of sight for the bathroom.
Do you do the first one and then the second one?
Yep.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So following on that, if we were to adopt what's in the staff report, which simply removes the line, wine tasting does not include quantities greater than a tasting size pour, one to two ounces, if we were to take that out and then some, our council or some future council said, gee, that was a mistake, there's no backtracking on that, is that correct? If we just, if that's the only thing we do is just take that out, we can't then come back five years later or 10 years later and say, gee, this didn't work out what we thought, so now we only want a two-ounce pour? It becomes a vested right.
That's correct, because it's a land use restriction and/or a land use right. Once that right is used and a person avails themselves of it, you're right, it becomes a vested right.
Thank you.
If a business changed ownership or a non-tasting room came on board after that five-year period, they would potentially fall under a new category or a new restriction?
Yes. The time limit's one year, so a business can be transferred and that right is transferred with the business when it's sold or a new owner comes in. If the use is changed, that use is abandoned and they'd have to come under the new rules. And if they stop the use for a period of one year or more, it's also abandoned and they need to come under the new rules.
I think maybe the most recent example relatively relative is RH. There was an abandonment of the previous restaurant use, so none of the conditions that went with that previous use were allowed to apply to the new use, even though it was same category of restaurant.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the council at this point? I'll formally open the public hearing and let's see, I don't know if we want to start, I think with Whitney with the chamber, since you're kind of taking the lead on this.
I'll start. Okay. Hello again, Mayor Dunbar and council members. Eric Housley was going to say a few words, but was a little bit emotional after the proclamation he texted me. Is it okay if I read what he, okay. Okay, so he said, "I apologize for not being able to stay in this meeting as I was a bit more emotionally drained than I was prepared. I 100 perspect, 100% respect the council decision to originally protect our community by allowing tastings only. That said, I have been very involved in helping my brother open a tasting room in Napa these past few weeks. In working, I saw many visitors to our business wanted to, wanted an experience and didn't really desire to do a full tasting. Most just enjoyed a glass of wine and the company. Of course, some bought bottles and many still did tastings. If I can say anything about Yountville, we provide amazing experiences. Those experiences keep people coming back. At this point, while I understand the original decision, I don't understand a reason to change, I don't understand a reason to change, I don't understand the reason to not change going forward. Other municipalities used to make fun of us for the number of hotel rooms we have, but now many are envious." It actually says that. "Thank you for your consideration and I left lots of bracelets, which are the bekindandelenahouseley.org ones for anyone in the room who would like to have one." Thank you. All right. I know he really...
And before you get started, that does remind me, there are a few email public comments that were received. They are, the council has all those, are also with the printed agenda packet that is available for anyone that would like to see those. So with that, please continue.
Thank you. Great. I was going to mention that as well. I believe we received letters of support from the following: Jessup Cellars, Larry Fox and Rita Fox, residents here in Yountville, Priest Ranch, Hill Family, Stewart Cellars, and Heron House. So hopefully you all received those.
And a couple of those came in just today, so they were just printed, they were not in the original packet.
Correct, yeah. So I did a really good job of memorizing the first presentation, but not this. So I'm just going to read from the letter that I sent you with some additional points. All right. "The Yountville Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the Yountville Tasting Rooms, respectfully requests the town of Yountville update the Yountville Municipal Code to allow wines to be poured by the glass or by the bottle by tasting rooms possessing a Type O2 license by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. Currently, Yountville Tasting Rooms, per the Yountville Municipal Code, are restricted to the following: Wine tasting does not include quantities greater than a tasting-sized pour, which is one to two ounces. This is why we believe this modification should be made. A level playing field. Yountville is the only town in Napa Valley and Sonoma County restricting tasting rooms to two-ounce pours. We currently have many restaurants, wine retailers, hotels, who have already offered wine by the glass or by the bottle options. This has not created an atmosphere of over-served guests. If we support restaurants and retailers in creating programs that are on par with their industry, why would we not support tasting rooms in a similar way? Type O2 license. Yountville Tasting Rooms must possess an ABC Type II license to operate. The ABC Type II license includes the freedom to pour wine tastings, wines by the glass or by the bottle. Lifting this restriction is not a new benefit the town is granting to tasting rooms. It is simply allowing tasting rooms to operate within the scope of their license. Extraordinary hospitality experiences. Our tasting rooms are committed to providing the best experience possible for customers, club members, and are currently, they are restricted from meeting those customer expectations by being limited to two-ounce pours. I know you're going to hear a lot about that in just a second. And local serving. There are few options for our locals to enjoy a reasonably priced glass of wine or bottle of wine, me included. By lifting this restriction, locals will be able to choose from 15 different locations to meet up, relax, and enjoy a reasonably priced glass of wine or bottle of wine. There is no evidence to suggest this modification will lead to an increased wine consumption. Yountville Tasting Rooms are committed to safe and responsible beverage service. This modification would not require additional parking spaces or require additional staff to serve guests. Yountville Tasting Rooms have no intention of by-the-glass-or-bottle service replacing the current tasting room experience. Yountville Tasting Rooms will continue to focus on wine education and sharing their brand story with every guest, with the goal of selling wine and club memberships, regardless of the type of wine service offered. The hospitality business continues to evolve here in Yountville. Updating the municipal code shows the town's commitment to supporting the investment businesses have made here in our community, and the town's desire to be a world-class destination for food and wine, which we are now, and hopefully into the future. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. I do want to remind folks, Michelle's about to remind me, that we do have, I think we agreed to a, because the room is so crowded, I'm going to say a three-minute public comment per person. If we get through everybody that wants to speak, and somebody wants to continue speaking or share new thought, we'll absolutely welcome that. Just want to make sure that everyone that wants to have a chance to speak does so, so that has no bearing on how long Whitney just spoke, but just something I forgot to bring up before, before I invited her up. So we will have a timer, but we also try to respect your ability to finish your thoughts. So who's next? Somebody's next, I know that. Ellie, yes?
And apologize for my low octave voice today. Still battling a little asthma and the allergy season, but thank you, Mayor Dunbar, and thank you, council, for giving us this forum to speak about this. I'm Allison Negronz, I know some of you. I'm the Director of Consumer Manager at Hill Family Estate, and I wanted to reiterate a lot of the points that Whitney made, and thank you, Whitney, for being a platform to sort of lead the charge for us as tasting rooms. And I wanted to express my support for this proposal to amend the municipal code and allow Yountville Tasting Rooms to serve wine by the glass and by the bottle. I'll speak for Hill Family, but also I think I speak for a lot of the tasting rooms in town. We kind of have two primary motives. The first is to better meet the needs of our membership, and our locals were often asked by our wine club members if they can order a glass of wine or share a bottle instead of a full tasting, because many of them visit often and are already familiar with our favorite, their favorite wines. We also see locals wanting to enjoy a glass of wine after work or before they head to dinner, and while the majority of our visitors choose to participate in one of the tasting experiences that we offer, we see, receive these types of requests often enough that we've identified it as a need that is not being currently met. Our goal is to keep our members happy and in the club for as long as possible. This would be a simple way that we can increase the number of benefits that we extend to them. We've also heard locals express frequently over the years that there are not enough businesses in the town that cater to the local community, and we would like to be a part of the solution for this. Offering wine by the glass or by the bottle, I think, would be a great and simple way to meet that need. The second motive, we talk about a lot in the Y Committee and with businesses in town, is to keep people in town. I've worked in Yountville for five and a half years. I've been with Hill Family for three years, and I worked for Kiorella Family Vineyards for two and a half, and I can say confidently that the common thread we've talked about is that our goal, as all of the businesses in town, not just wineries, is we want to keep people in town. We believe that Yountville is a destination where people can spend a minimum of a day, if not more, enjoying everything that our town has to offer. And actually, to reinforce this goal, and I know many wineries in the room are also doing this, we partner with hotels and other wineries in town to extend benefits through them to our membership, with the goal that then our members are staying in town and visiting those businesses in town to taste, enjoy activities, and dine. We want to be able to meet the needs of our visitors and keep them staying in town and coming back, and we feel that by-the-glass-or-by-the-bottle options, when requested, would help us remain competitive with the rest of the valley. Having to say no when asked for a glass or a shared bottle of wine means that we lose that guest to another experience, and possibly outside of town. And the last comment I wanted to make was about impact. I wanted to reassure you that we have no other agenda for this program, other than what I've just expressed. In particular, we don't have any intention of by-the-glass-or-by-the-bottle replacing any of our tasting experiences. If any of you have visited Hill Family Estate, Steve, I know you're a member, and I know I'm almost out of time, but I'm almost in. We offer blind tasting with Black Stemware, we have a wonderful garden tour, a vineyard tour with a partnership, Vilagio. We love our experiences. We have no intention of not promoting them or not extending them. This would be something that we want to offer when it is asked by our members, our locals, and visiting guests. We'd just love to offer this as an additional benefit, and it's coming from the feedback that we've received consistently enough that we feel it merits some attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Close enough.
Use this button here.
There you go.
Oh, it's a tie. Okay.
Well, I think it.
Oh, that's okay. This is fine. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar and council members, for your consideration on this. Also, thank you to Whitney and the chamber. Your support has been immeasurable. We really appreciate it. My name's Tracy McCardle, and I'm the General Manager for the Good Life Wine Collective, which includes Jessup Cellars and handwritten wines. Modifying this code will improve our business in the following ways. It will give us greater ability to customize our tasting experiences based on customer, member, and local requests, thereby improving our overall level of hospitality. It will also allow us to meet, and hopefully go above and beyond, expectations that are already set by our neighboring wine communities. It will also give us the ability to stay current and marketable to the ever-evolving demands of our customer demographics. I wanted to make a couple comments just on our internal operations. The main objective of our business will absolutely not change. We want to sell wine. We want to convert memberships, and that's really done by delivering the very best customer experience that we can. Having the ability to have by-the-glass or by-the-bottle kind of in our back pocket as an offer will allow us to have more flexibility and more customization, and really allow us to deliver that really amazing experience. I also wanted to talk a little bit about responsible beverage. It is extremely important to us that we abide by the requirements of the responsible beverage program and stay safe. It's not only important for our business, but it's important for our customers, and obviously important for the community as well. We absolutely love this town, and we want the very best for everyone who lives here and works here. Thank you again for allowing the code change to be brought to council, and for listening to our explanation on why it would be a positive change for our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, welcome.
James Stewart here, from Stewart Cellars. Thanks for having this item on the agenda and putting so much effort towards it. I wanted to kind of come up here, I was one of the first businesses to kind of have like a giant tasting room, and a lot of the concerns that I heard tonight were sort of similar concerns that everyone has had for my property throughout, you know, its proposal and then construction, and so on and so forth. And so I wanted to kind of highlight some of the things that I was hearing, and a lot of it is just sort of, you know, managing alcohol consumption, that's a big one, right? We don't want, you know, heavily intoxicated people running around town. And, you know, per the comments from Jessup Cellars, you know, we don't want that either on our property. It's dangerous, it's bad for business. You know, we have a vested interest in basically taking care of everyone, and, you know, health and safety is paramount. And then, last time I was up here, I think I spoke to the ABC code, right? So if I lose my license, I lose my business. And so we are very invested in making sure we abide by ABC laws and also the Yountville laws. And in some of these rules and regulations, we have, you know, parking and employees, and I'm one of the businesses that actually reports in how many employees I have. And that reporting started when we were given permission to actually serve people on the patio. There was a concern that having an additional service on our menu would create a spike in the number of people that are on property, and then the number of people that we have to hire to handle this number, you know, this larger number of people. We actually haven't seen any of that. If you look at our records, our employment numbers have stayed pretty stable. We don't expect that to change. And we don't expect to ever, I mean, we don't hit capacity now. I don't think that we will in the future because of the by-the-glass change. The way it works now is if somebody wants, you know, a full glass, they have to come in over and over and over again and order the same wine over and over and over again, two-ounce pour, right? So we're allowed to do a two-ounce pour, we'll sell them a two-ounce pour, we'll sell them another one, and it kind of has this effect of like getting up and down and coming back and forth and then out of the tasting room. And so we kind of like to remove that awkward interaction for the customer, and, you know, the idea from a sales guy's perspective, right, like we need a million avenues to yes, right? Like being, having to tell customers no is always a really negative experience for them, and always after the no comes the why, and then we have to explain it. And I think I would like to remove that no from that interaction, because people do rate our business, they compare our business to other businesses, and it's kind of a jarring experience for them, you know, for them to have come from one place to our place and then have it be so different. And then the last thing is, it does impact wine club visiting. I mean, we have wine club members cancel their memberships based on the fact that they don't get as many offerings from us as they might get from somewhere else. So I ran out of time, and wanted to ask, do you guys have any questions of me? Like, I'm an open book. Like, if you have questions about our business and how this could be impacting the community, I'm happy to answer them. Okay. Or reach out to me independently. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, welcome.
See if I remember protocol. Richard Hall, 4064 Heather Lane, former Yountville resident. I'm here today to represent the chamber members. Obviously, Whitney does that much better than I probably will ever be able to do, but as the Chair of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, the demand really for this action or for the change in the code has been presented to us by our members, and that's what we're here to do, is to support them, and that's why we're before you today. As a former council member, I remember putting in force many of these conditions that are in front of you with regards to every conditional use permit that you have and you've read, and I probably have my name as an eye on making sure that the count, that the businesses that were signing up for doing this in our town, which was of concern at the time, because we didn't know how many tasting rooms we were going to have, we thought it would be a town of tasting rooms, and we've seen that that hasn't come to pass. What I would say is that this is a demand-driven request. The people that come to visit this community, the town of Yountville, and the people that live in this community, their ask is that we have an additional offering. I know this, because not only am I one of those people, but the business that I work with right down the Yountville crossroad, we have our customers demand that same thing of us. We follow, as a Type O2 winery, that same condition that the ABC permits us to do by the glass. We'll do that because it's an ask. The focus is on tasting, the focus is on education and the experience, and that's what I believe is before you tonight. You do want to see a level playing field with your businesses here. You don't want them to have to pack up and move out. It pays for your roads, it pays for your parks, pays for your flowers, and all the other wonderful things that the town residents benefit from in this community. The water utility, the waste. It's all driven by those dollars that wouldn't be there without them. I believe it would permit or create an increased traffic and potential sales, but I would be remiss if I didn't have you identify or think about one thing that I would take away as a council member, should I be sitting on the dais tonight? And that is the only thing that might change, in my opinion, in this juncture, is that people that tend to buy or take wines by the glass do linger. A tasting experience is a tasting experience. You get in, you taste your wines, you make your decisions, you buy your boxes, your bottles, whatever you do. When you have a glass of wine, it's more of a social activity, and the one risk that I think all of us are aware of, but we need to be cognizant of when we're making this decision for our community, is that there could theoretically be some impact on the amount of time people are parked to go have these experiences. I don't believe that it's great enough to outweigh the benefit of the additional demand that's being presented to these businesses that are supporting your community, but I do think it's something that you should all take under advisement, and we'd be remiss in not sharing that. Thank you.
I was so hoping you were going to go past the time, so I could tell you.
[laughter]
Darn it. Who's next? Anyone else? When I close the public hearing, that's it. Okay. I knew there was somebody else.
I knew there was somebody else. Mayor City Council Members, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Rob Stout. I live at 116 Champaign. I have to tell you, I was a little reluctant to come up, because I'm such a new member of this community, been here less than two years, but I felt, since I've been here, so loved and so much a part of this community, I thought I'd offer a few thoughts. I was surprised to hear, what I thought I heard was just kind of unvoiced concerns about unintended consequences, or could this be the tipping point of allowing more alcohol, and what could be the negative things we hadn't thought about by the changes that are proposed tonight? And the more I thought about it, the more I said, that risk of really negative consequences seems so small. One, all the tasting room managers kind of want the change. I mean, that's not a surprise, but I think you've heard of the responsibility they look at their business and what they're doing. I talked to some of the restaurant managers in town, and they weren't concerned about it either. And then I'd also like to propose that this seems like such a small risk, because what we're proposing isn't some radical new idea that we'd be experimenting with. As I understand it, we're the only municipality in wine country that has established this additional control on tasting rooms. So it seems to me, the risk of doing that and allowing our tasting rooms to have the flexibility so many of them have talked to you about, would seem to be a pretty good idea. So I would hope that you approve the change, because I know I would enjoy going and having a glass of wine myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're sure? Okay. Last chance. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, and invite discussion by the council. Would anyone like to begin with comments? Shall I choose someone? Councilmember Mueller? We usually start on that side, so I figured I'd start on this side.
So, in my opinion, I think Eric Housley, even though he wasn't there, thank you for reading what he had to say, really summed up kind of where we started and where we might go tonight. This was a brand-new change by ABC. I'm just going to go back to 2010, because that was approximately when it was, and Mr. Hall does remember sitting on the council at that time, and it was new. And we like to, here in Yountville, some And we like to, here in Yountville, sometimes lead the pack, but also sometimes just kind of take it slow and see what happens. And as Eric said at the time, that was fine. And now we are seeing that this is probably a change that the wine tasting businesses would like. So as in the total spirit of Yountville, let's, let's give it a shot. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Which to my left would like to go next? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I'll be happy to. So I quite agree. I think that locals and visitors and wine club members who know what they already like, they, you know, this isn't going to mean that tastings won't be offered and tastings will still be two ounces. But if people choose and desire to have a glass of wine, and I think that's a good idea, there are, there are too few places in town where we locals get to just sort of go and hang out and, you know, we don't have a lot of bars either. I'm not going to mention the obvious one, but I've only ever been in there once. But, but I support this. I think that I want our tasting rooms to be on an even footing with all of the tasting rooms in the Napa and Sonoma Valleys. And I didn't realize that we were the only municipality that was, we tend to be a little bit more uptight sometimes here until we get to know everybody. And I, I, I support this. I think that this is a good idea. I'm not too concerned about the, that there'll be, you know, a lot more drinking and a lot more drunk people. As a matter of fact, I was talking to friends about it who told me that they supported it too, but they said, you know, you can have a flight of four two ounces, that's eight ounces right there, then you can have another flight in the next, you know, tasting room of five two ounces, that's 10 ounces. So I think it was always a possibility that people could drink too much. Heaven knows some have, but no, I, I, I want us to be on an equal playing field in this town because I realize that they also, it's getting more competitive throughout the Napa Valley. So I'm, I'm glad to see that there might be some consensus on the council, but I support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Thank you. And thank you to Whitney for a lot of the education on this process. Thanks for not rolling it out like the outside pouring, but it is a lot better. But I also highly respect what Mr. Stewart and what Ms. McCardle had to say. We're all heavily vested in this community and we all see each other and we all are adding to it, including the wine tasting rooms. I, I believe that based on the fact that ABC O2 license allows this, that we should be able to allow it. I see it as in a menu addition on a restaurant menu. When restaurants are adding items or subtracting them from their menu, we're not overseeing it step by step. And I see this as the same process of allowing to have one other item on the menu for guests to choose from. So I definitely support this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And I appreciate everyone coming out and all the public comment. So I guess I'm the one up here who's quote, "a little uptight." So that said, I will begin. I do see, I understand and I do support the idea of it. But I also don't think Yountville is like every other town that does it. We're a mile long, we have 16 tasting rooms plus whatever else we have. So I think we have to look at Yountville. But again, I took some notes from the presentation, the, the chamber as a, wants to enter a public policy discussion to find the right solution for, among other things, glass and bottle service. I commend that, I applaud that, and I would like to do that with them. I do think that the unintended consequences likely are small, but if they are not small, we are a small town and then they are large. So I'm, I want to propose a, sort of a compromise and I want to give our businesses a chance to do exactly what they are saying they want to do. I want to say, we're going to leave in a two ounce pour, but then we're going to say, regardless of what that says, you can pour a full glass or sell it, or a full bottle or sell it, if the tasting room is enrolled in the employee parking management plan and the tasting room does not intensify the use of the property or premises. That gives the businesses exactly what they said they'd do because everybody said nothing's going to change. So I'm giving a chance here for nothing to change, except that you can pour by the glass and the bottle. And I think as we've all said, we're all neighbors, we're all friends. We have a certain level of trust, but we're not all going to be here in five years. We're not all going to be here in three years in all likelihood. So I'm trying to plan for that eventuality. And I think this respects our businesses, it respects our locals, it respects our visitors. And so that is my proposal for the evening.
Thank you. I will share a couple of responses to what the Vice Mayor just shared, but before I do that, some general, general thoughts about this idea, which I support. I'll just get that right out there. You'll tell soon, I think, by my comments, but I look at this similar to a day spa. You go to a spa, maybe it's because I was just thinking over the weekend, I'd really like to go to a spa, but I know there are few in town. They provide a long menu of services and to add, you know, a hot stone to all the deep tissue and the lomi lomis and, see, I mean, I was really looking at this stuff. It doesn't have an overall impact on employee headcount or parking or hours of operation. And so that's kind of how I look at it. I don't look at it as a concern about more alcohol consumption. I don't get the sense that my colleagues really worry about that either. I respect the Vice Mayor's comments about kind of guaranteeing the commitment that we're hearing verbally tonight. We've had that kind of conversation before with other types of business in town that we hear a story and we're like, if it, if you live up to it, that's great, but how do we make sure that you have to live up to it? Usually it has to do with late night noise or hours of operation, something like that. But I just see this as catching up to the changes that ABC made. It has become really kind of punitive for our businesses to have to under-deliver a level of service that is allowed by law. Any type of business that has alcohol, it seems to me, the number one concern is accidentally violating the ABC license because as, I think it was Mr. Hall refer, or no, it wasn't, it was Mr. Stewart, I think. It's all of you, right? You have an ABC license. You, you get caught busted, you get busted violating that, you're done. There's no, gee, we understand that circumstances were this, that or the other. We have shown our willingness also as a council that if conditions of use are violated, that you will have to answer to us. But I think the ABC license has really, I mean, they obviously have a longstanding reputation of no, no exceptions, no apologies will be granted. So there is a strict adherence to that for that very reason. Those permits are, licenses are so hard to get. If you were lucky to get one in the lottery, good for you. You got to pay under $30,000. On the street, they're what, $300,000? So those are held very near and dear and there are great reasons not to violate. No other permit conditions are affected. So it's not as if you no, you no longer have to comply with everything else that, that is in your conditional use permit. And yes, we have some businesses that are under different conditions. That's what's happened over time. You know, we have one tasting room that has zero parking. They were, they've been here the longest. They were maybe, I think, the first tasting room and just happened to have a unique, yeah, sorry, I'm looking at you right now. But I remember when we were talking about Bob Hurley and Hurley's Restaurant and some of the modifications he was interested in making in his restaurant. And usually we require certain things like air conditioning units and things like that to be in the backside of a building. And he's like, well, I have no backside to this. It's on, you're totally exposed on three sides and really almost four sides. And so we need to sometimes have conditions that are modified, given conditions. But I do think at a, at a very minimum, we should allow our businesses to perform at their legally permissible level. It's in all of our interests to have our businesses be successful. If you violate your ABC license, if you start having more employees and having parking issues that we start to become aware of, you'll be hearing from us. And I don't think there's anyone interested in trying to get away with anything here. I think it's really, as I think Councilmember Durham first mentioned, or maybe Councilmember Dornbecker, I keep forgetting who's saying what, but leveling the playing field and really just not having that one more thing that might cause somebody to go elsewhere. We, we pride ourselves in customer service in this town and in this valley. And so I do not want to put any roadblocks in, in the way of that that we can avoid. I, and just again, specifically addressing the Vice Mayor's concerns or idea, I don't feel like a requirement to be enrolled in the employee parking management plan is warranted in large part because we're talking about something very different than a restaurant where you might have 30 or 40 employees on property at any one time. We're talking about two, three, four employees maybe, maybe not even that many vehicles. And so I don't see there being a factor, even if there was a headcount change. Intensity of staff or, or patrons, I hope there's an intensity of the patron experience. That's kind of the whole point, right? Again, we are such a walking town that I think we have so many of our, our residents and visitors that will walk to our tasting rooms, they'll take the trolley to our tasting rooms. I don't see parking as being impacted here at all. It's, to me, it's so straightforward. We can eliminate the redundancy of the wine tasting bar definition because it will be consumed into the wine tasting room definition and we remove the restriction on the two ounce pours and allow our tasting rooms to fully serve their patrons. And some of those patrons will be us. So I look forward to that. So those are my long-winded remarks. I invite the council to consider the Vice Mayor's suggestion of alternative language that's different from what's being presented by council, if there are thoughts about that. Councilmember Durham?
So I have questions about the changes and, and I don't know if it's for the Vice Mayor or for the attorney. In terms of the, on both pages, it would be the definition for intensity. Is this not, is this stated in the use permit? I mean, the, for purpose of this section, intensify the use means an increase in the number of employees, an increase in the capacity for patrons and an increase in the number of hours of operation per day. Are we, are we not covering this in the use permit?
Some of the use permits likely do touch on this. That was the definition that was used just to lock in place what those three things are on the effective date of the ordinance.
And if I might comment also?
Yeah, please.
Having just been?
Please.
Threw them off.
Yes.
Many of them do not, none of them mentions how many employees.
Right.
Most of them, it's on square footage, so I guess it's ever how, what the fire marshal says is occupancy, but it's also going to be ever how many chairs or stools you can get in there. So they don't really address number of patrons being served. I mean, like I said, some of them for outdoor service, like I think Priest Ranch, we did some math on that, Stewart, they get a total of 50 outdoor seats. I mean, we have some, but they're mostly tied to outdoor consumption. And hours of operation per day, a number of them, the hours listed in the use permit are greater than the hours they're actually operating. And I would not, by this, I do not intend that if you, if your use permit says you can operate till 10 and you decide you want to do that, I'm talking about if they say, gee, people are having such a great time sitting on, in our tasting room having wine, I now want to stay up until 11 because they are backing up to residential. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on those things.
Very good.
And, and while you're thinking of your next comment?
Please.
Is that not already covered that if, if that type of a change the Vice Mayor was just alluding to, they would have to come back for a permit modification?
For hours of operation, yes.
But, but the deal, but the thing is, if we simply take out the language that says you're restricted to a two ounce pour, when they come back for a modification, then there's no opportunity to consider, is it glass or bottle service that is causing this problem? That's the issue I'm trying to get at, is to give us that flexibility.
Okay. Councilmember Durham, you were going to continue?
Yeah, and if I might, I might just then make a statement based on that. And I think this is where we differ. And for those of you who have never come to a council meeting before, you know my pure enjoyment of speaking about parking in Yountville. It's what we talk about at every meeting. And I, my, my thought and my concern is we will be talking about employee parking for a very long amount of time, hopefully on the next agenda, which is my understanding. And I really would prefer that, the employee parking management to me has grown organically and I will be honest, a little too organic for me. I'd like more structure to it, I'd like more understanding to it. And that's why we're having the conversation that we are on the next agenda. I, I took a note here. First of all, nobody's going to push a cart in this town after our last vendor ordinance. I'm going to go on record as saying that. Our vendor ordinance, if you want to push a cart in this town, is about four pages long, okay? Also, while I greatly respect my fellow council members, the math at Priest Ranch confuses the hell out of me. We have a tendency to very much get into the day-to-day business of a lot of our businesses. So in respect to this, if this is covered by the use permit, and I do want to see a town employee parking management program, but I want it to be fully fleshed out and described before we are attaching it to other people. And once again, to come back to my comment, we're adding a menu item to a choice on a business. Just as if Thomas Keller adds another $40 entree to his menu, we're not, we're not talking about intensification, we're not talking about changes. And so with that being said, I, this is not exactly how I would like to move forward.
You're referencing the proposed modifications?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Dornbecker, did you have additional?
Well, I agree. We are going to have an in-depth discussion about parking coming up and I would rather, you know, if we are going to make some sort of changes to that, I don't think we should be imposing things that may change again by, by the, our esteemed Vice Mayor's suggestions as much as I do admire and, and respect her opinion. I, I also don't support that position.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollard, did you have any further comment?
Yeah, I, personally, well, I have to give you like a term that I've heard at one of our local restaurants. And if people come in and have a glass of wine, I think maybe Mr. Hall mentioned it, and then they want another glass and then they want another glass, they're nicely referred to in our hotel and restaurant bars as campers. They come and they sit on the stool and they don't leave. I don't really think that's what's going to happen. I don't think we're going to increase the amount of campers in our tasting rooms. I think from everything I've I think from everything I've heard and what I've seen in tasting rooms, it's probably not going to be to their advantage to really kind of push glasses of wine. They've got a model where they're tasting wine and they're trying to sell wine and they're trying to get those customers back in a second time so that is repeated. That's the business model. You don't want to just, you know, make one customer happy and have them leave. You want them to come back. But I, I think that if a glass of wine helps out a little bit on the, on the menu item, so be it. I don't think that, you know, the, the campers are going to come and take all the chairs and, and stay there forever. So, and I don't think they're going to be then driving and requiring more parking. So, I, I just, I, I believe it's going to have a minimal effect overall. So, I'm fine with just the changes we're going to make.
Any last comments, Vice Mayor?
So, thank you for your comments, council. I certainly am bright enough to read the tea leaves on this. Frequently, I'm not, but this time I do. I just feel it was my job to bring it forward, and I feel I've done the best job I can of that. And I, I will end where I started. I support this. But I think there may be some regrets because I think legally, we don't have a right to put anybody in Employee Parking Management Plan unless and until they bring their use permit forward. So, we can talk about parking till the cows come home, and as Councilmember Durham says, we will. But we're not going to be able to do anything about that. But that's such a small piece of what I think might be a bad situation. So, I appreciate everyone's input. I appreciate you reading all my red lines. And I really appreciate all of you all being here and all the conversations we have had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there a motion to be...
I'll make a motion that we introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number nineteen dash four eight five, amending Title seventeen zoning of the Yountville Municipal Code to remove references to wine tasting bars as allowable use and zones were currently allowed, and amend the definition of wine tasting room to remove two-ounce pour restriction.
Second.
I don't believe we have any further discussions, so please vote. And that does pass unanimously. I, I will echo what the Vice Mayor and others have said, which is, thank you for all your input on this item. It's important that we get as much of a variety of perspective as possible when we're making these types of decisions. So, thank you all very much. And we do have more meetings, so if you could respectfully go wherever you're going. As we let the room clear, I will go ahead and introduce the next administrative item, or our first administrative item, item ten A, Discussion and Potential Direction on the Art of Peace Program.
Thank you.
And Samantha, if we could just wait for that door to close.
I was going to get the door myself.
I think we're good.
Cheering.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm here tonight, council and mayor, to discuss with you, as well as Kim Cook, the Chair of the Yountville Arts Commission. And we also have two of our commissioners here tonight, Amy, Kevin, Kevin and Sia, sorry, I got to really practice that, and Jim McDonald. So, as you know, I'm the staff liaison to the Yountville Arts Commission. And one of the things that has come up recently was a possible collaboration with the Robbie Poblit Foundation. And so, I did include in your staff's report some detail on that foundation. But it basically stems from Patty Navalto, who is Robbie's mother. Robbie was killed by gun violence in Vallejo in two thousand and fourteen. And since then, she has really invested so much time, dedication, and heart into this foundation in Solano County. But it's really started to branch out from there. And it, it came to the attention of the Yountville Arts Commission from Marty Wordsworth, who you talked to earlier tonight. Marty had read about one facet of the foundation, which is called Art of Peace, in the newspaper when they did a grand opening of a show in Vallejo. And so, we met with Patty, just Marty and myself, and talked, learned more about the foundation. You know, initially, I think, just speaking off the cuff, I, I felt a little nervous about the potential political nature of the subject. But once we met with Patty, I felt really confident in the fact that this foundation is really working in a productive way towards ending gun violence. It's not an anti-gun foundation. They're working in really productive ways to get unneeded guns off the street, turn them into really beautiful art. And they also have another facet of the program, which is getting people rehabilitated out of incarceration into great lines of work and training. And so, we started talking about the idea in December when we met with Patty. And we learned about the foundation. I talked about, the Art of Peace Program is really what's of interest to Yountville Arts, of course, where that stems, though, from the gun buybacks that the foundation also conducts. And so, they do gun buyback events. They've done five now in Northern California and are working on one in Augusta, Georgia. And then they send those guns off to be disassembled so that they cannot be recreated as weapons. And then the parts come back and they make, artists make art out of them. And so, that's taken a lot of different avenues based on how the particular city that it's happening in wants that to go. It could be, some have done small-scale shows, some have done permanent art exhibits. San Francisco's getting ready to do their opening soon. So, there's just a, it's very much based on what the community itself has interest in. The other facet I talked about briefly was the work in progress. So, that's the rehabilitation program. And there's partnerships that they have formed with many different unions and trade and skilled labor type of organizations throughout our area for tours. They provide scholarships. So, there's a lot of great facets to it. And so, Kim is going to come up and just walk you through a little bit of what Yountville Arts has done in the past couple months. And so, there was an article in the Napa Register. You know, we don't write those articles. So, it did make it sound like this has progressed a lot faster or quicker or decisions had been made, but that simply wasn't the case. We knew we needed to come before the council to continue that discussion. So, Kim's just going to come up and catch you up a little bit on...
Did you know that, Kim?
No, I'm totally putting her on the spot, what Yountville Arts has been discussing at their meetings, and then I'll wrap it up.
Kimberly Cook, Yountville Arts. I think I just want to make a quick statement and then probably answer more of your questions, more than anything else. I apologize if we blindsided you with this. We were kind of surprised by the article in the paper, too. We had the one meeting where Patty and the foundation made the presentation to us. And we were so blown away by the idea that we couldn't even talk about it that night, that we had to come back, put it on our agenda, think about it, and then come back at the next meeting and start talking about how we might want to shape this. Amy came to the meeting with some fantastic ideas. And so, we kind of listed out where we thought we wanted to go with this. The end result of that being that we would come up with a, a basic outline idea and bring it to you guys to discuss if you, if we thought we were interested as a whole. And before that could happen, the article came out. It was like, wow. So, the project is very much in its infancy. There, it jumped ahead of us because of some contacts that were made with the Sheriff's Department and the Napa PD. And they've pulled together a meeting with officials from Napa and a couple artists. So, we wanted to make sure that we were part of that, so we got it on the agenda really quickly for tonight. But our thoughts are that we would inform, we would put together a committee, a couple arts members, a couple council members, just for a start, and go to this meeting. And from that, we can decide if we want to participate or not, and how we want to participate. Maybe we can start forming that outline. The intent, in general, of the sculpture that we were thinking of is that it not look immediately like it promotes anti-gun violence picture. It's more a piece of art that would appeal to the town, that would happen to be made from gun parts. It would be explained in a, a special kind of plaque, that this is what it is and this is why we think it's important to have it in town. It would be an educational plaque. And the purpose of art, one of the great things of art is that it gets people talking and it's educational. So, are there any questions about what we're doing or why or how?
Well, Samantha, did you have more to your report than we can ask both of you questions, possibly?
Um, not really. I just, I just want to echo what Kim said. And so, there's, as I described, multiple components to this. One of the main components that would really affect if we participated as an art entity in the Art of Peace Program would be a gun buyback in Napa County. And so, we feel it's really important that that take place. And that would be the, the starting point for any type of movement forward in the Art of Peace Program. I don't think Yountville Arts, we discussed, you know, well, what if that doesn't happen? Do we do this with gun buybacks from somewhere else? And, and there was pretty much consensus with the commission that that's not really what we're looking for. We're looking to make this a part of a county-wide project. And so, like Kim described, it jumped very quickly from, because I was planning to come to you next month. But this regional meeting that was really more around the gun buyback got formed. And so, that was already kind of in the discussion phase. But the meeting that's proposed for Thursday with the sheriff, the City of Napa Police Chief, and County Board of Supervisors, City of Napa, council members got scheduled without really any consultation behind that. We really are the only art entity, art, municipal art entity interested at this point. I think there are private artists that may be interested in, in being a part of it. And so, that's a little bit more of why we came forward this quickly for this kind of exploration phase, to include the council in that. But like Kim said, we have a broad idea of what the project could entail, but none of that has been set in stone as far as bringing a formal proposal to the council. We're hoping that that ad hoc will, if we decide to move forward with the partnership and the gun buyback moves forward, that's not something we see the town of Yountville specifically participating in, a gun buyback as we contract with law enforcement services. It would really be the County Sheriff's Department and the local municipal police departments that would, and the DA's office would look at that particular piece of the project.
Okay. Questions of either of our reporters? I'll start with Councilmember Dornbecker this time. You always have to be ready.
Is there some way that we could be sure that the end product, the piece of art, would not resemble a weapon? I, I just, the thought of that just makes my skin crawl.
That is one of the statements that comes right from the foundation. Her goal was that the sculptures didn't look like guns, that you weren't even able to tell they were gun parts unless you looked really closely. And we would have the say over what we want the piece to look like.
Yeah.
When we put out a call for artists.
I guess I got concerned because in looking at the photographs, I can see the pieces of guns in most of these. And I really feel that that would be very uncomfortable. And it was mentioned that we were thinking about the pad in front of Town Hall. And I think that that would absolutely not fly with me to have a piece of art that looks like a gun in front of Town Hall.
They also, there are some pieces where they took all the metal and melted it down and then made something from it.
Thank you.
So, we can... The beauty is that we really would shape whatever it is that we think will fit Yountville. That's how we shape the call for artists, and we would choose the design. So, there's a lot of flexibility and, and they don't have a cookie cutter program. It's very much based on what works in each individual city that they've worked with.
Thank you.
Councilmember Durham?
So, to be clear, the reason we're talking about this now is because it would be a permanent piece of art in Yountville.
That's, that's what we're hoping.
And it would be a purchase.
We would see. Yeah. So, there's, they don't really have a model for that. The permanent, they haven't done this type of a permanent sculpture yet. What they've done in the past has been, in Vallejo, the artists were given a stipend to create the piece, and then the pieces were sold to benefit the foundation. And so, the, the foundation paid the artist stipend. They, they, the sculptures were for sale, and then the foundation kept those fundraiser funds. It's working differently in San Francisco. It's differently in Oakland. So, we would have to, you know, flesh all those details out as far as who funds what and when and how and...
And just, and just to confirm what Councilmember Dornbecker said, my, my brow is furrowed because of the pictures I saw in there. But if you agree to melt down sidewalk judge with it, I'll back you.
And if I could just, for the council and everything, this is a case of where the commission is briefing the council, kind of letting you know they're noodling on something, and they want a little feedback and direction before they go further. So, I think that's how I would, you know, and they're asking, you know, there's a meeting, other people are going, do we want to be at the meeting? So, that's one of the questions. Do you want a couple council members? I think what we're really saying, and I think you're hearing, is that if we are interested, and I think there's some irony to an earlier resolution, and also, I mean, it's, it's painful in some ways, but our community does have a connection to this issue. And is there a way that we might be able to do something in a positive way with an education? Right now, we don't know what that might look like. So, the real question is, are we willing to go down that journey a little bit? And there will be different points and places where we need to make decisions, and we'll have that ability. So, I mean, that's how I would look at this. This is by no far, you know, we're not committing to anything other than to be a part of the discussion at an active level with those, and I think there's, everybody shares those concerns, and there's no better way to do that than to stay engaged. And if it doesn't come out the way we want it, we pull the plug.
So, if I...
Yeah, go ahead.
Then I will finish my thought. I do think it's a good idea, especially given the proclamation that the mayor made at the beginning of the meeting. And I do like your comments that the Arts Commission in this community will be having an input on that final product as well. So, based on those comments, definitely, I see a, I have a desire to move forward.
Okay.
Getting a little ahead of us here. We're just getting the report. We haven't even had public comment yet. Councilwoman Rollard, you had a question about the staff report? That's where we are.
We, we're still at questions? I thought we were making comments.
We are at the questions. The town manager and the, and Councilmember Durham took it. I lost total control.
I have no questions. Come back when you're ready for comments.
Okay. No questions? Vice Mayor questions?
Thank you, and thank you for the report. So, what have other municipalities done? Because Vallejo was a private studio, right, or a gallery, and they, for, I mean, have other municipalities purchased pieces of art? Or other counties, local governments purchased art, or what have they done?
I don't think, the foundation is very open. This is their idea. What would you like to do with it? Is how they approach it.
So, the city of Vallejo's involvement in Solano County was the gun buyback. And then the art, the art part took place through the Robbie Poblit Foundation and their downtown association. So, the, the part that the municipality had was supporting, helping to support a gun buyback. San Francisco is very similar, except that they're opening their city hall to house this art exhibit, and then are also funding a permanent piece that will be placed at their city hall. The city of Oakland is very similar as far as funding and helping to facilitate the gun buyback. The Augusta, Georgia is really interesting because it's actually, Loretta Scott King's family has started that conversation. And the end result of the gun buyback, there will be a permanent sculpture in front of their memorial. So, there's a lot of media traction happening around them right now. And, you know, I'm, I think we all have our own very passionate feelings about this subject. And, and beyond that, it's also that if we don't get on this, someone else will.
And so, what, what you're asking tonight is whether we want to go forward with at least continuing to explore?
Yes.
Is that the bottom line question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And if you... Yes. Thank you.
So, really what we're asking as far as the staff report's concerned is any feedback you have, public feedback. And then if you have consensus to appoint to council members to the ad hoc, just to ensure that we follow all of our laws. to the ad hoc, just to ensure that we follow all of our laws as far as Brown Act at these potential public meetings or meetings that are also including other elected officials.
No gun buyback program in Napa County?
Not to date, as ever, not to date, but that discussion even pre, was predating us getting involved, so they were already talking to Napa County about a gun buyback. So now it's just getting everybody to the table.
And there are kind of two parts to this, at least the foundation, the gun buyback advocacy and then the art advocacy. Is that accurate? And the art advocacy includes potentially sculptures, exhibits, events.
And then there's the third component, which the work in progress program, so there's a, there's, the local labor council is very involved with that piece already. So, there's, all three components are actively being looked at in Napa County.
And I'll comment on the, if we don't act quickly, somebody else will comment later, but in my comments, but just because there's a public meeting on Thursday, doesn't mean that we need an ad hoc committee to have council members go if they want to go, right?
That was Steve's recommendation.
Why would, this is a public meeting, so anybody could go to that with or without an ad hoc committee. It's a yes or no, really. It really is, Steve.
Again, knowing how they've structured the meeting, Mayor, if it's just simply a public meeting, but if the representatives were expected to speak, and again, we're not convening the meeting.
I don't care. So, is this like the cannabis ad hoc where they asked each municipality for two members to come and have a conversation?
No.
It doesn't sound like it.
No.
Okay. So, this is a public meeting that anybody can go to and there are some elected officials going to it, but it's not structured.
I don't know if I would call it a public meeting, it was an invitation meeting. They invited certain people.
There's no Brown Act, there's no.
They're not posting an agenda, no.
No, and you're not making an action. So, I just say, they, I do agree with Samantha, it was an invited meeting and we noted that they were inviting two elected officials from the county, the City of Napa and others.
Who's they?
The Robbie Publiet Foundation.
So, a private foundation was taking the initiative to invite elected officials and we're being asked whether we want to then respond to that.
Actually, it was John, what was his name, Davis?
He's acting on their behalf from the Labor Council. But I think it's, that's one piece of the puzzle. The other piece is that if we do choose to move forward to have some productive interactions between the council and Yountville Arts Commission ad hoc members as well, moving forward, this, you know, us coming to council, getting feedback on a, similar to what we did with the sculpture in Veterans Park, is not always the most productive use of your time at a council meeting, so to also have the ability to have those discussions to kind of form what this might look like.
And I totally respect that part and it's very unfortunate that this was put in the newspaper and made it look like we were already on board and I have a real problem with that. But I'll save the rest of my comments for when we get to comments.
And I would also say, right. The other issue, if this is an item the council's not interested in, it's also appropriate that we get the feedback now so that the Arts Commission knows that. And that's in, we talked about that. That is a consideration that the council may say no.
We're going to get there, very soon. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wanted to comment on this item before we have our discussion? Okay. So, let's have this discussion. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Moore?
Well, I'm still kind of confused about the invitation and the elected officials and all that. My, my gut right there says anybody can go and, you know, this is something, I think the Art Committee does a great job and, you know, for us to like insert ourselves early on, I think it's, might be doing them a disservice by having us there. I'm fine with the Art Commission attending, having these conversations and if any elected official wants to go, they can go, but I can't quite get my head around why we need a, an ad hoc committee when we're just having a conversation and we don't even really know where we're going yet with this. I think we should definitely have that conversation and have, you know, you guys might go to your first meeting and go, oh no, it's not really what we thought at all, you know? We have to come back and disband it and all that, so go to the meeting if anybody wants to go, go do that. But, you know, I've always really liked our art program because particularly of the model that we have, that nothing's permanent, it's always rotating. So, as we talked about earlier, do you like this? Do you like that? You know, there's very few things, if you don't like them, you don't have to worry about it because they're gone, you know, and something new comes in that you can experience. So, I have somewhat of a bias towards, you know, maybe if something goes forward, you know, I think we're going to have a lot of time to talk about this, having something that, you know, maybe we could waive the, the fee if it's purchased or something, but I didn't really want to have the judge here. I like the judge, but, you know, I like the rotation, so I'll just leave it at that of our art.
Thanks.
I wouldn't melt him down though, but.
Councilmember Durham, additional comments?
We can roll the tape again, but if you'd like, but I still, I still believe I'm willing to move forward as they need our direction.
Thank you. You've already had some comments.
No, I asked questions.
Okay, would you like to comment?
Yes, please. So, I was part of the ad hoc committee that chose the sculpture in Veterans Park and I found that a very rewarding exercise for a rewarding subject. I think that this is a valid subject to explore and I am willing to, you know, serve to help if that is the way we end up going. Because I would like, and also selfishly, because I would like to have input into what that sculpture is going to look like because it cannot look like a weapon, but nothing less. So, that's sort of where I am. I mean, I'm open to the project, to the discussion, to helping, so that's all I can say.
Okay, Vice Mayor. Finally, I'll let you have a chance.
So, I think after really thinking about it and hearing everything, I think an ad hoc might be a little premature this evening, but I do think if some, I'm hoping, I'll be out of town, but I'm hoping some council members are inclined to go if they can and at least listen and certainly I trust our Arts Commission to go and listen because I would like to hear more about it. I just think it may be premature for the formality of an ad hoc.
Thanks. And I'm not sure my poker face is very good on this issue. I think it's totally premature also. I respect the process and I respect the fact that the Arts Commission has brought this forward to us. I have no interest in moving forward with an ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee makes it sound like we are likely interested in moving forward and I'm not. I would, I don't even care if it doesn't look like a weapon. And the examples that we were given in the packet, there are several of it are clearly nine millimeters or other pistols there, there's a bike that clearly has a rifle, I mean, those would be completely unacceptable. And I appreciate the conversion of weapons of violence to art and that mission and respect the foundation for, you know, advocating in the memory of someone that they lost to gun violence. I sit here with my Mayor's Against Illegal Guns pin on and wearing orange about being aware of gun violence and trying to find, you know, ways to reduce it and eliminate it. I don't want a piece of art made out of weapons. I just don't. I think we, first of all, the gun buyback, I wouldn't even start if Napa City and Napa County sheriffs haven't talked about whether this is something they support. I would want to hear from law enforcement if they think gun buyback programs are good or bad. There are some that think they're bad because you get people that steal guns so they can turn them in and get cash. Getting, getting illegal guns off the street, great idea. I have no problem with that. But I have a problem with using weapons and I think we're really talking about guns here, but it could be other weapons to be represented as an art piece. I don't think we should be, I kind of almost feel like it's celebrating the weapons of violence. I'd rather see art like we already have. I think to Councilmember Dornbecker's very appropriate point, the Faces of Freedom that we were, we shared that ad hoc committee, we made a point very early on, we wanted this to be about the lives of the people that have the faces, literally, of those that fought for our freedom. We were very early on in the conversation, not interested in a gun, combat boots, a helmet, things that only inspire thoughts of, of violence and conflict. What I think would happen if we pursued an art piece is that I think it diminishes the feelings of survivors of gun violence. And to the point that you made earlier, it is timely, I would say. I don't think it is timely in the same sense maybe that you felt with our proclamation earlier about gun violence awareness, that for those reasons are why I oppose the idea. I think we need to defer to the victims of gun violence and be the most sensitive that if any of them is offended by this idea, we don't do it. And I can tell you as one of those people, it offends me and I don't want to do it. So, even, you know, I kind of went back and forth about, well, what if you melt it all down and you make a beautiful sculpture out of it? And I thought, well, maybe I could get along with that, but no, I mean, certainly not in front of town hall. I'm glad that you said that. I don't want to walk into this building every day and see something that I know came from guns and reminds me already too often of what so many of us have endured. So, I think you know where I stand on the ad hoc committee. I just think this is completely premature, even if I didn't feel so strongly in opposition to it. Any council member, any other folks that want to go to this meeting are welcome to go and pursue this concept if you'd like. I mean, I'm just one vote of five, so, but that's why I feel like there's no reason for an ad hoc committee to go to this, this meeting. So, I think I've made myself clear. With that, Gary?
Yes, I'd just like to add some clarification. There's been some discussion on the Brown Act for this. So, for the town council's benefit and also for the Art Commissioner's benefit for this meeting, more than two can attend provided the meeting is open to the public, the public's been invited and there's no discussion outside of the agenda for that meeting. And so, beyond that, there would need to be an agenda for the meeting. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So, it sounds like the Vice Mayor and I are not available or interested in going, so if of the three, if more than two want to go, they can, but they just can't talk about it.
Well, and I'm also going to say.
Well, Gary, sorry.
Yeah, so you can have a discussion as part of the meeting, provided the meetings of.
Right, I mean, after they leave, they couldn't discuss whether they like or hate the idea or anything like that, it would have to happen in, in a meeting setting.
That's correct.
Yeah, Steve?
I just want to clarify that when we say it's brought to you for feedback, direction and discussion, and I'm just going to reiterate what I said earlier, if the council feels that this is not an appropriate thing, you want to continue, that's an okay outcome. That's what we're looking for. That is the kind of feedback because we mentioned the ad hoc, not so much just because of the Thursday, but more as a process to use forward guiding it. But I'm also going to say, if you're not interested, that's an important thing to do now and we can, you know, I'm sure the Arts Commission has other projects and objectives because I don't know that it's going, you know, if it's a concern, and that's a valid concern, Mayor, I'm just saying, that's why it's here for feedback. We recognize that.
Yeah, and I want to respect that there are five of us up here and, and if the majority wants to move forward, I'll respect that. You just know I'm not going to support it going forward. Not that I can make a predetermined judgment, Town Attorney, but I will be open to anything that comes forward.
I just had a question for the Town Attorney also about, so this meeting is, has, will not be noticed, right? There will be no notification of it, it will, and it's not agendized?
That's right, and it doesn't actually have to be. So, if a private group puts on a meeting, as long as the public generally is invited to attend, more than two council members can also go, as long as they only participate as part of the agenda for that meeting. When I say, I say agenda loosely, as part of the discussion that's been invited for that meeting.
So, okay, thank you.
So, what we're asking or being asked is to provide direction about is there an interest in an ad hoc committee being formed? And I, my guess would be, it would be beyond just the meeting on a Thursday, I think, right? It would be to continue the dialogue with the Arts Commission on this concept, so that's up for consideration by the council.
So, which Thursday are we talking about? I'm confused about which Thursday.
I tried to look it up very quickly, I think it's this week, isn't it? This Thursday.
Well, I have no intention of going and I don't think we need an ad hoc. You know, I just hate to shut down, if this is something the Art Committee wants to, you know, take a look at, I have no problem with them attending one meeting. Sometimes you can be surprised by stuff, I don't know. So, I just don't want to say, no, they can't go. I will not be going and we don't need an ad hoc.
No one's saying that anyone can't go. Everyone is welcome to go. Just to be clear. Others? Any further comment? Because we do need to give direction to staff and the Arts Commission.
I would just like to say that I think that what the, their foundation is doing is a wonderful thing, but I too am very troubled at the thought of having a sculpture in our town that's made of weapons. So, I mean, if there were any other way we could help to support them and Sam, if you and I want to talk about that offline, I'm happy to do that, but as far as having a sculpture made of guns, I, I'm not in favor of it.
And I think to that point, Councilmember Dornbecker, the work in progress portion of this foundation might be something that would be something to consider. It's, in my opinion, a more positive effort that might be applicable and appropriate. Councilmember Durham, did you, sorry?
No, I agree.
Additional comments or?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, anything further? So, is there anyone that wants to recommend an ad hoc committee to go forward at this point? Did you need any additional feedback from us about, with the Arts Commission about whether? Michelle?
I need to have a better understanding of, is there three members of council that support pursuing this collaboration at this time?
So, there's apparently not a motion or three members to have an ad hoc.
Should council provide consensus direction to move forward with exploration of the partnership? Then, staff request council establish an Art of Peace ad hoc committee, so it's sort of twofold.
Beyond just the meeting?
Is there consensus to pursue this? And I hear that you do not want to establish an ad hoc committee at this time because it's premature. I'm not clear on the first part of this.
Okay.
So, I hear two no's and three I'm unsure. One, one, okay, and two, I'm not sure.
So, so the question that you're asking, just so that we're clear, on the last page of the staff report, should council provide consensus direction with exploration? And so that's not just about this Thursday's meeting, it's the concept at all of an art piece.
Yeah, in general, I don't think they would want to invest any more time because the considered project would obviously be something the council would need to support in the end and so they don't want to spend a lot of time on something that, that you're not in favor of.
And like I said, if there are at least three members, then that's fine, but if somebody needs to make that motion to establish an ad hoc to continue the exploration then, or do we just need to appoint it?
Just provide consensus direction is helpful whether we want us to explore.
Don't you need to know who?
I'm hearing from the discussion that you don't want to participate in the meeting right now, but you're delegating to the Arts Commission. If they would like to attend on your behalf and bring the ideas back, fine.
No.
That's not what I said.
Okay. Well, I'm, that's why I'm seeking clarification because I'm hearing you're saying if they would like to attend, they can.
All I'm saying is it's a public meeting and anyone, I have no jurisdiction to tell anybody they can't go to a public meeting.
So, they would be representing you.
So they would be representing you as your, you appoint the Yountville Arts Commissioner, so they would continue to pursue the project as representatives of the town of Yountville, unless we tell them otherwise. Um, I guess is, is my point. So we can continue with the exploration phase and come back, but as I said, I don't, I don't feel like there's strong um consensus on, on is that a good use of Yountville Arts Commissioner's time or not. So if we follow this project through and come back with a sculpture and spend 20 hours of work on this, I don't get the feeling that we're all on the same page that this is a project that Yountville would like to pursue at this point, which is okay. We just, I just, we just need to know.
So, so I'll weigh in. I, I certainly do not support uh us being involved in another art piece, such as the one, the concept here, that we would purchase. So I guess I'm gonna say no. If that, if that's kind of the general concept, no.
Okay.
So, just, so we're clear, other council, where do we stand?
Well, as an, as it, as it refers to a piece of art, I'm not interested. I, I am interested in learning more about the foundation. You and I can talk about that offline.
Yeah. So our emphasis with Yountville Arts is really that piece of art of peace, which it would be made out of recycled gun parts, so it sounds like that's not a, a direction we're gonna go in.
Clarity, Councilmember Durham?
Sure. Um, I, I understand this is very personal to a lot of, to a lot of people, which I greatly respect. I, 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 sorry, I, I mean, I, I greatly respect your opinions be, there's a lot. Um, I wouldn't mind the council, uh, the Arts Commission moving forward with it further. So that's my position.
Vice Mayor?
Um, I mean, this is really, I guess, a good word for me personally is fraught, because it's, um, I can see the transformative aspect of art, but I also, something deep inside me says perhaps our time and funds could be better spent on something that might not do damage to someone when they walk by it. Um, I can't walk in their shoes. So I would have to say, given the discussion tonight, um, I probably could let this one go and would let this one go.
Then we have consensus direction as to how you want to proceed.
You have uh majority direction, which is totally fine. I mean, I, I absolutely respect it. I wanted everyone to be candid about it. Um, you know, I share my perspectives, but I want to make sure that you all share yours and feel like you can. So I appreciate that.
And I, I don't know if Kim wants to say anything, but we really appreciate, that's why we came here, is to make sure that we were moving in a direction that the council was not just comfortable with, but supportive of. And so we really appreciate your candid feedback, and we'll move forward with lots of other things we have to do. So we appreciate it very much.
Kim, did you want to share any, anything more? Okay. All right. Well, thank you for, for the, for bringing it forward. Uh, again, we appreciate the partnership with the Arts Commission. So thank you. Okay, let's move on to our next item. Item 10B, a flag policy and ceremonial flag pole consideration. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to be brief. Um, at the last council meeting, uh, Councilmember Jeff Durham had been working on advocating for the town council to consider uh developing a policy related to ceremonial flags, and then as a part of that, a request to fly the rainbow pride flag. And the direction from council at that point was for staff to work with Councilmember Durham, Councilmember Doran Becker, reviewing some policies and work to put together a policy in place to govern the process by which um a decision would be made on requests and recommendations. And we put together a fairly um, a, a policy that governs the flying of the flags in general, and then also identification of the concept of a ceremonial flag pole. And this, the idea behind the ceremonial flag pole, which is utilized in a number of communities, is that you're not disrupting whatever the traditional approach to the flying of the national and state flags are at city and town facilities. So that's sort of the intent behind that. Um, in working with the attorney, um, we also are trying to come up with a recognizing, how do you try to limit so that it's a freedom of speech and it's crafted in a way that you're protecting the town council's expression of freedom of speech. Um, I don't know, Gary, if you want to explain a little bit more about the protection structure, and then also, uh, Councilmember Durham and Doran Becker could comment. But the action tonight would be a two-step action. First would be discussion, consideration, and adoption of a policy. And then if a policy is approved, then the request would be consistent with what was made by Councilmember Durham last meeting, even recognizing though it may not meet the 30-day requirement that we're putting in the policy, that we would consider flying the rainbow flag for the duration of the month of June, uh, as long, or as soon as practical from the standpoint of implementing the council's policy, should it do so tonight.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add to that is for the ceremonial flag aspect of the policy, it's drafted so that it's a recommendation from the public on what to put up, and ultimately the decision of the council. That's a slight distinction from how other policies are drafted that allow others to apply to put their own flag up. And the reason for that is, it's town property, this is your decision on what goes up there, rather than opening up to the public to express their own particular views. They're making recommendations to the council in a similar way as public comment or any other recommendation that might come before you, and that provides a different free speech analysis that I could talk about all night if you'd like.
It's okay.
So basically, you're saying that if it was an application, once you receive one and accept it, you could not decline any others for any reason?
Yes, you'd essentially be creating a limited public forum, and you wouldn't be able to turn down an application on the basis of its content or viewpoint.
Okay. Any further, are there any questions from staff about, no? Okay, I don't think there are any questions at this point. Um, so it's not a public hearing, but I'll go ahead and invite members of the public who I know are here and interested to, and I'll warn you, I don't, I'm not sure, Debbie, if you were in here when I was reminding folks that we have the three-minute clock going, but I'll be, I'll be as lenient as I can be.
No, I've, I've, I've already been here, so I just wanted to let you know that the vote passed as a yes in American Canyon unanimously. So at this point, we're the only vote, voting body left to vote. All the other towns and cities, the county, the school district that serves, you know, almost 90% of our students, has all voted yes. And so to me, that's just creating a norm of understanding that something for us to be a part of. But I just wanted to emphasize that this is really especially for our young generations, for, it's for everybody, but we have a generation gap in different respects, and I know this is a big change for some people, but I'm here to support especially younger generations who, for, whom this is important.
Thank you. And I will just add that we did receive one e-comment and one email from local residents that are, uh, both of those express their opposition to the flag, so I want to go on record with that.
And then a third email, Mayor, from the Brightmans in support. There was a third one in support.
Oh, yes, that's right. Did that get copied? Oh, did I miss it?
Yes.
Yes, Sherri and Joel Bright, Brightingham, uh, in support of, yes, thank you. So Megan Mason, Denise Hughes, and the Brightagems. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you. Uh, my name is Bailey, and I am here to ask you to make an important statement for equity and inclusion by raising the rainbow flag during the month of June. 2019 is an iconic and historic year for the LGBTQ community, as it marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, known as the birth of the modern LGBTQ movement. In our own valley, historic decisions have already been made to honor our LGBTQ residents and visitors. Napa City Council, Napa Valley Unified School District, St. Helena City Council, the County of Napa, private businesses and churches across our great valley are embracing the meaning and symbolism of this flag and are raising it in, in celebration of pride. In celebration of a vision of a better tomorrow, filled with hope for equality and a world without hate, the Pride Movement and raising the rainbow flag was not born out of a celebration of sexuality. It was to bring visibility to an oppressed and marginalized people. The Napa County LGBTQ Strategic Planning Meeting in October 2018 revealed that our own LGBTQ residents fear accessing local healthcare networks, feel isolated, alienated, and invisible in our community spaces, and unsafe with local law enforcement. The California Healthy Kids Survey for Napa identified that 45% of LGBTQ identified youth in our high schools have considered suicide. Due to a lack of inclusion and equity in our community programs, events, policies, and services, people from our LGBTQ community continue to be marginalized and feel unsafe in Napa County. Raising the rainbow flag isn't going to erase these complicated issues, but the colors flying in tandem with the Stars and Stripes is a source of inspiration and a recognition of equality. It is a signal to everyone who lives here, everyone who visits this great city, that we, as a community, celebrate inclusion and diversity. Whatever our sexual or gender identities, political or religious views, there are many things we can each do to build a community that is more welcoming and safer for ourselves, for our children, and for those we love. Tonight, each of you can take a step toward accomplishing this by voting to raise the rainbow flag in honor of Pride Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bailey. Who's next? Please.
Sorry, I didn't know I was gonna be here so long. I didn't bring my water. Hope I-
That's what everybody says, every meeting. You should all know. We're here till 10.
So, uh, my, my name's Beth Nelson. I'm a local documentary filmmaker. I'm also a business owner of Napa Valley Couples Therapy Center. Um, I'm one of the LGBTQ moms who is part of the action to get these flags this year in the, in the county. Um, well, hopefully all years, but we kind of came together in a room and boom, here, here we are. So you guys are the last ones to raise the flag. Um, I was adopted at birth in 1973, and I grew up on the hill by the vets home, but all the action was down here, even when this town was mostly empty fields. My first job delivering papers, the Napa Register was here, as were many restaurant jobs that followed, including the diner and the French Laundry. Um, I even worked at the gas station across the street from Poncha's, which came up earlier, um, the bar named after the young tough resident who passed some time ago, years after leaving her reservation in New Mexico and making her way to Yountville, where she lived the rest of her life. I heard you laugh a little at that family bar, but keep in mind, they've endured more than I'm willing to bet most people in this room could fathom as First Nation people. Poncha, nicknamed by her Mexican husband, was the woman I would eventually learn was my paternal grandmother. And yes, I did get to meet her and the family, and I have nothing but love for them. I always knew what I was, that I was different, but it went beyond being adopted or being a young person of color, being raised in a mostly white family in a mostly white county back then. I knew I was different, but I also knew it was not okay. Today's a really special day for me, um, June 4th, 1994. Um, I found myself at the Yountville crossroads, ready to take my life. I'll spare you the gory details, but ultimately I spent a month up at St. Helena Hospital, where one day the doctor asked me point-blank about my sexuality. I decided on the spot to come out, and my whole life changed from that moment, for the better. I've reclaimed June 4th as my annual day of self-reflection many years ago, but this year it feels particularly special. I want to thank you for tonight's proclamation and urge you to fly this celebratory marker of safety that is the pride flag. It would be even cooler if you could fly the Philly version of the flag with the black and brown stripes to honor the people of color who made the first pride possible at the Stonewall Inn, as they were the first ones to rise. They were the people of color and the trans people of color, and the both. Um, so that, that would be cool. Um, all those years ago, and to tell your people of color visitors that do come to Yountville that Yountville is theirs too. It says right there that Yountville is the heart of the Napa Valley, and I do believe that. I've watched you become a world-class destination. I urge you to be that heart, especially in an era which is sending so many messages of hate and teaching that the most powerful forms of communication are anger and belittlement. We have a unique opportunity here in Yountville to show the world that the right thing to do is to fly this high, visible marker of peace that is the pride flag, in tandem with our Stars and Stripes. That is, that this big, this big, big, little destination in the U.S. is indeed on the right side of history. Thank you. Thank you for letting me go over time as well.
Thank you. Michelle started it late, too. Anyone else like to speak?
I don't have a written speech or anything. My name is Nina Berg. I'm a resident. I've lived here for around four years, owned a house here for, since 1989. And um, my child, I have a transgender son, and he grew up in San Francisco, and uh, he was embraced there by a loving community. And I would love it when he comes to our new home in Yountville, that he was embraced by a loving community here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we're addressing the policy that's been presented by staff at this time. Would there be, uh, let's see, who have I not called on first yet? Uh, Councilmember Doran Becker, I don't think I've called a new first yet.
Well, good. I'm happy to speak about this. Um, first of all, I mentioned at our, um, our meeting when we first discussed this, that I was acquainted with Debbie Alter Starr's mother-in-law, um, forgive me, I, Adele Starr, um, who was the founder of P Flag, who was the parents and friends of lesbian and gay way back. And I interviewed her on a radio program that I hosted in San Francisco. I lived in San Francisco for many years, and I had friends there who told me that they could never go home because their parents didn't want them. Uh-huh, excuse me. But, um, after I moved to Yountville, I was really surprised when I was not on the council, but the Marriage Equality Act was before the Congress. And we were approached, and our, our council then was approached, um, and asked if we would support a resolution, um, in support of the Marriage Equality Act. And I am very proud to tell you that we did pass that, and I want to thank our mayor, because he brought it to us. And he was on the council then, and I congratulated him and thanked him for that. So this isn't a, a hard step, I don't think, for us to take. I totally support flying the rainbow flag. And uh, to me, the symbol of the rainbow is not that it excludes anyone, but that it includes everyone. And um, in our town, we do have a heart, and we want to be the heart of the Napa Valley. So certainly, we may be the last, and we may be the smallest, but we're, small but mighty. I want to support it.
Okay. Um, first, I want to comment on some of the changes that the Vice Mayor made to the policy, and that I'm in complete agreement with those. So they're a little bit different from what was first proposed. So I, I just want to state that first, and then I've got something a little longer here.
Well, and if you'd like to just talk about the policy and then give your other comments?
Let's talk about the policy then, thank you. Um, I, I prefer the changes that the Vice Mayor said. The, the present, any flag that would go onto the ceremonial flag would need to come from a council member. And given our community, and it, it still allows for accessibility, it still allows for all the conversation, it still allows for us to be able to move forward with a ceremonial, ceremonial flag if we were to, um, have this flag pole. So I, I completely agree with this policy and the changes the Vice Mayor's made.
Okay, thank you. And don't let me forget to come back to you. So Gary, have you had a chance to review these and-
I have.
Your comments on the proposed changes?
Yeah, so, um, I talked a little bit before about the distinction between an application and a recommendation. This takes it even further, and it's an even safer approach by only allowing council members to even suggest what should go on the flag. It really eliminates any argument that it is a limited public forum. It gives you all the discretion to decide what flags will go up there in, in terms of the policy. So I don't see any legal concerns with it, and in some ways, it's actually a safer approach than the other one.
And you're okay with the strike-throughs on what you feel now may be unnecessary? The, um, strike-throughs on the approval process, Vice Mayor?
If I could, I'm sorry, that's my bad, um, track changes. Those actually were placed in somewhere else. They were taken out there but reinserted.
Got it.
So-
Got it. So, it really ends at the bottom of the third page?
Yes.
And the rest of that is redundant?
Yes.
Okay. So, Gary, so all the changes, additions or subtractions, you're comfortable with?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Muller?
That was the one part that I think when we read the policy that Calistoga put together that really convinced me that that would be the right direction to go, which was to have the council, if somebody wants to bring this forward, got to reach out to a council member, and then they have to convince the rest of us. So, I think that's a great approach that deals with a lot of the other issues. I actually talked to one of the other council members in American Canyon yesterday about that, because that was their concern, that, you know, once we do this, then all this other stuff's going to happen. And I felt that really gave us a lot of protection. I'm hoping that's what changed their vote, because they were kind of on the fence yesterday. So, you know, I don't even know what to say. I just think that, you know, we need to support this, and I think it needs to be in front of our town hall, that this is the voice of the local government here. And, you know, if there's any discussion, I know we've had some discussion, at least with public comment, about putting it in the community center, but if we're going to do this, I think it needs to go in front of our town hall, and it is the voice of our government that supports this.
Thank you. Vice mayor?
Well, since I'm the one who suggested the changes to the policy, I...
You better not backtrack now.
Exactly. I appreciate it, and I particularly want to echo what Councilmember Durham said, and that is, I have no doubt that our residents are, feel very safe to approach us with any kind of request, or thought, or recommendation, and we have a process to get that forward. So, we will appreciate your continued collaboration with us. Thank you.
And I will agree with the support. I appreciate the vice mayor's. I know you like to analyze our town attorney's ordinance language. I do think that this adds another layer of protection. You know, we're talking about free speech. It's a difficult one to get your hands around sometimes. We want to be, just protect, going forward, what this is really representing. And I'll save some, most of my comments for part two. I support the policy that's being presented to us. And I will, just commenting on us being the last, and I think you said the best also.
Of course, of course, it's the best.
Right. But one of the things that we do, and it was addressed earlier on a previous item, is we tend to be kind of not, I guess deliberative is maybe a way to put it. We haven't even had a chance to be deliberative about this. I mean, we started talking two weeks ago, basically.
Same in Napa.
Yeah. But understanding that our process has always been a little bit more time, a little bit more analysis to get to a conclusion, but I think what happened was, we collectively saw that this makes total sense for our community, and it's good to see that it makes sense for other communities to have a policy in place. And again, that's where the speed of all this got in front of, frankly, some cities that didn't have policies before. And we even said, we'd like to have a policy on this before we act on the specific recommendation or request. So, we've done that, I think. I think this is exactly, speaks to what we wanted it to, and will allow us to go to part two of this issue. But know that it might seem like it took a while for us to get here, being the last one to meet, but this is lightning speed for most of the processes.
Twenty-five years. I came out twenty-five years ago, so that's even longer.
If you had told us that long ago, we would have had all this taken care of. But seriously...
And it's almost nine o'clock, so I think I know you're deliberate.
Yeah, to be, yeah, to be serious, though, I get the sense that we are going to say yes to this in just a moment, but I'm proud of our ability to take this stance on behalf of not just our community, but beyond our town limits. So, to create a policy and a structure to allow us to take the next step, I fully support it. So, vice mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Oh.
I thought you were saving yours for, this was the policy only.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Right. We need action on the policy first, because we can't get to your other comments otherwise.
Thank you, mayor.
So, I would move to adopt resolution number one-nine-dash-three-five-six-one establishing a, hold on, I've renamed it.
You renamed it, too?
Yes.
As revised?
As revised. How about that?
The hard copy for...
As revised. So, I make that motion.
Councilmember Durham, are you going to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. He might as well.
His buttons never work.
I've been pushing buttons.
Councilmember Durham is seconding them.
Sorry, thank you.
So, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. So, we have a policy. Step two.
Thank you, mayor, council. The second part has, now that you have a policy, you have a request before you with the footnote that I mentioned about the exception of the thirty-day notice, request from Councilmember Durham to fly the rainbow flag.
Okay, Councilmember Durham.
I don't get a timer, so here I go.
Actually, ten minutes is the maximum for council members.
Council policies.
At my discretion.
It's only five to nine. I've got an hour.
At my discretion.
So...
Oh, you got the five-minute timer.
So, I want to say thank you to my fellow council members, first of all, for considering this item, and I also want to thank the town staff who took this on rather quickly as well. Oh, sorry. The Stonewall riots occurred fifty years ago this month, and gay pride was not born out of a need to celebrate being gay, but for our right to exist without persecution. This was not a party, but about being equal to all of those around of us. Best estimates say that there are more than two hundred LGBTQ people who reside in Yountville, including numerous residents at the veterans home. And our health outcomes as we age depend largely on how connected we feel to our supportive community. This year is the right time to ask that something like this be done to show the values, support, and inclusiveness of the town of Yountville. These are very interesting times with unprecedented LGBTQ visibility, and at the same time, so much hate. Transgender and gay people are more visible, and for many, because of this visibility, this means what others do not know or understand makes them uncomfortable. This visibility is a part of an education because it creates conversation. On the federal level, the Department of Health and Human Services is moving forward with policies to exclude transgendered people from a multitude of resources. What the current administration is doing is taking away resources from those who are the most vulnerable, those who have been kicked out of their homes, whose families have rejected them. And the HHS is setting policy that will allow for homeless shelters to turn away homeless transgendered, many who are youth. And as you understand the policies more deeply, what this administration is doing is erasing the transgender and gay people from the population. You do not exist because we do not recognize you. What does this say to you if your government does not acknowledge your existence? This rainbow flag that would fly at the government building states that you do exist, and we support you and include you in our community. I actually attended the raising of the rainbow flag in the city of Napa this past Friday and at the Napa County on Monday, and I was born and raised in Napa, so this brought a big smile to my face. At the Napa event, after raising the flag, I was approached by a local mother that I know. She was there because her seven-year-old child that she raised with dresses and dolls told her she was a boy. That was seven years ago. This mother came alone to feel safe, see support, see the love, and the inclusiveness from fellow community members. She grabbed her piece of rainbow cake, had me take a picture in front of the flag, and walked away with a big smile on her face. As the city of Napa made the decision to raise the flag, I watched it play out on social media. I've been told that what we're trying to do is just a faction, and that we're asking for special rights, and others have stated they are not happy where Napa is headed, that the elected officials are breaking the Constitution. And I personally love hyperbole to bring around others to your viewpoint, but I find sarcasm works a lot best. So, I will just be curious and not judgmental, and that's what I ask of everyone. There was a letter written in the Yountville Sun stating the writer's personal beliefs, and they called on community Christian ministers for their response to the raising of this flag. So, I found two local responses. First of all, the Crosswalk Church, which is an American Baptist church, as well as the Napa Methodist Church, both are showing inclusion by raising the rainbow flag. And here, I'm going to quote the pastor of the Crosswalk, which I will say again, is an American Baptist church, as saying, quote, "And there are churches right here in Napa that will truly welcome you and affirm who you are as created in the image of God." And this is on their website. And then I read that the rainbow flag at Crosswalk Church was vandalized, and so those who did just wanted to say, "You aren't welcome here." And ultimately, that's what that letter written to the Yountville Sun also stated. So, by raising the flag at town hall, we are saying we're all welcome here. This letter and the vandalism underscores the exact reason why the flag should be raised. According to California Healthy Kids Survey, twenty-four thousand children identify as transgender across the state in grade seven through eleven. A hundred and forty-four thousand, five, sorry, are gay, lesbian, bisexual in the state of California. And so, there is an importance of fostering a world where LGBTQ young people are free to live equally and know their worthiness and power as individuals. In public comment, a community member has asked this about the ceremonial flagpole: "Why create an element in town that would create animosity?" Also, another stated, quote, "I believe that by raising a special flag for one group of people is divisive." My experience is, this has already happened. This was my experience growing up, but I am an optimist. I'm now allowed to get married to the person I love, who I've been together with for twenty years. I see this as a positive statement. I see this, what about conversation, a desire to learn and understand? To the unknowing, the flag can spark interest and discussion, and when successful, can lead to a change mind and maybe, hopefully, an advocate. There's a local mother, oh, sorry, there's a local mother working here in Yountville, and her son attends Yountville Elementary School. A few months ago, we were talking, and the discussion arose that her son told her he was gay. And my first thought was, wow, I had that discussion with my mother when I was twenty-five. It is exactly this reason that we need to raise the flag at town hall here. Every day, this mother and her son drive by town hall, and for the days in June, this young boy will see that flag as he goes to school and then walks by in the afternoon to do programs at the community center. He has visibility and recognition. He is included. His mother knows that her son is safe in this community. One day, we won't have to come out of the closet. We'll just say we're in love, and that will be all that matters. This is not to say there won't be those who bully or call out names, but the raising of this flag is a step that promotes education, promotes inclusiveness, and promotes conversation. So, I want to quote one of my favorite authors, Dr. Seuss, who has so famously stated, "Be who you are and say how you feel, because those who mind don't matter, and those who matter don't mind." We need to be authentic. We need to be who we are. Everyone wants to live to their fullest potential. Anything else creates just a multitude of negative issues. I've gone through those. The flag helps that this young student will walk with pride and his head high, equal to those students and his friends around him, nothing more, but definitely nothing less. And this is why the rainbow flag is raised. Nobody's asking for special rights. Nobody is legislating morality. Nobody is asking for special treatment. Our Constitution is not in danger of being broken. This is about visibility, education, understanding, conversation, community, inclusiveness, and love. So, I fully support raising the rainbow flag on the ceremonial flagpole at the town hall in Yountville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment. I usually tell the audience not to respond, but I'm not going to say that tonight. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I sort of gave you my rationale, and listening to Jeff just cements in my mind and heart that this is, this is the way I want our country to be, and I want us to reflect our country truly. So, I support this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Muller?
I already, I just think this is great. I kind of remember back, I don't know, must have been like eight or nine years ago when we had the big discussion about whether we were going to be an inclusive community. And it's kind of the same thing I thought then. It's like, how can you say no to that? And I'm just, I'm glad we're here tonight. I'm glad we're doing this, and, you know, people may think we're last, but I think we were first, so...
Vice mayor?
Thank you, and I'd really like to thank the ad hoc committee for bringing this forward and giving us this opportunity to have a public forum for this, and when the time comes, I plan to punch the green button.
Thank you. Per our policy that was just adopted, somebody has to provide us a flag. So, please make sure that it includes all the colors from the original flag, if you can.
You want the Philly flag or the...
I think you'll work with Councilmember Durham and Councilmember Dornbecker, who have been our ad hoc representatives, on which flag. I think we can leave it to your discretion that it's the appropriate flag. More importantly, appropriate size for, and Steve will have to help you out with that in terms of, well, we only have, we're not, I don't know how high the pole is going to be, so it needs to be high enough. That's what I mean. So, the plan, I believe, Steve, is to have this just to the north of our front stairs. Is that still correct?
Correct.
So, as soon as, as you said, as soon as practical, much less than, much fewer than thirty days, we will organize that raising of the flag, and I'm very happy to support that. It was back originally, actually, Joey, council member, on the deck of Pacific Blues, where we had that conversation back in two thousand eight. And it followed what was happening in San Francisco and also what had happened in the city of Napa when there was an effort. Then, Councilmember Van Gorder brought forward a resolution on same-sex marriage, and it failed. And we and others from our community were able to craft an equal rights resolution that was accepted here in Yountville in two thousand nine. And I'm proud of that effort that we collectively put together. I know as a council, we're all proud of this proclamation here and what it represents. And so, I think this is a fundamental right that we protect, all of us. When we titled that resolution, the Equal Rights Resolution, it was all about inclusivity in all ways, and it was all demographic categories, because it is about treating people fairly and equally, and that's what we do here in Yountville. And I'm also happy to see our greater Napa Valley community embracing the same commitment to not only our residents, but anyone that's looking at Napa Valley, recognizing that we respect all of our brothers and sisters. I think it's been well said about inclusiveness being... I think it's been well said about inclusiveness being kind of that lead word, but I'll be proud to be able to walk by that flag as it flies this month. It's important, though, that come July 1, we don't go backwards, we don't start forgetting that we are all committed to standing next to each other. I know you're not going to let that happen. I know.
I just want to say, October 11 is National Coming Out Day, so you might want to consider that date.
I'll have you talk to our ad hoc committee. So I won't go on any further. I didn't mean to speak that long because I felt like, Councilmember Durham, it was, you said it eloquently and perfectly, so thank you for representing my thoughts already and those that influenced you bringing this forward. So thank you very much for that. I mean, would you like to make a motion? I don't even know if we need one, but I want you to make one anyway.
So, hold on, I need to look at it then. So I make a motion that we display the rainbow flag during LGBTQ Pride Month in June at Town Hall on the ceremonial flagpole and waive the minimum 30-day advance notice.
Perfect.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have to wait for the electronic. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Debbie, we do have more business. What are you saying?
I have a question.
We do have business we need to keep going with. Can you wait until after our meeting? Or when we raise the flag?
We'll be raising it.
Everybody will come back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going on record, this is the most emotional agenda and meeting that we've had, I think, ever.
Ever.
From the very first time.
Steve, if you break down during this rental property conversation we're going to have in a minute.
They'll be crying for a different room.
No, but next up, we do have our Yountville Arts Commission appointments that we met earlier tonight and interviewed, and Michelle, our town clerk, is going to tell us what happened, and we'll entertain a motion.
The council recommended unanimously the three applicants, which are incumbent members Jim McDonald, Marty Wordsworth, and new member, new application Cynthia Capcian, if I pronounce that correctly.
Close enough. She's back there.
I know, I saw her.
So she knows.
I don't know if I got it right.
Close enough.
Okay.
Thank you. So that action was taken earlier, and you'd like a motion to that effect?
Yes, vote tallies.
Want to go back to electronic?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept those appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote. That's unanimous as well. Thank you. Thank you to all the applicants that came forward and the incumbents, as well as our new addition to the commission. Looking forward to getting all of your input on our arts commission. Okay, Steve. Next up, hosting platform update.
I do have late-breaking news to share with the council. As I had indicated earlier, we had had productive dialogue with legal representatives from Expedia, which governs, or owns, I should say, VRBO, or I've now learned I call it Verbo, and HomeAway and Airbnb. And we had, in generally, reached a framework of concepts that could be accepted by the town in terms of compliance. I also want to stress, and the council knows this in the communications, that none of the companies are arguing that there is any illegality or anything wrong with the town's ordinance. It is completely in compliance with the results of the federal court ruling in HomeAway and City of Santa Monica. Most of it comes down to an issue of they're prioritizing their staff resources into making the programming and administrative changes that they need to do to implement. They're focusing on larger markets first. In short, we've indicated that what the town really needs to see is a 30-day block so that you can't book a transaction for less than 30 days. That will go a long ways towards resolving most of the concerns, the issues, and we need a certain level of information sharing, and that's where most of the communication has been going in terms of what can they provide us and how can they facilitate tracking that will allow us to identify the host on their platform and transition and review how their, with their permit number. So the good news is both entities have acknowledged that they can create fields for the entry of the town permit. The late-breaking news is that Airbnb actually sent a fairly detailed email very late this afternoon. Gary and I have taken a cursory look, but the good news would be, we think it provides a framework with a little bit of clarification that will allow us to then send Airbnb between the two of us, get a correspondence that says, yes, this is an acceptable outcome of how we will find you in compliance. We continue to encourage our hosts to talk to the platforms. What we have seen, and some of you have seen it also firsthand, is they're not getting very far up the chain of command, and most of the people they're talking to don't really, one, they don't have knowledge of our ordinance, and they're providing sort of standard customer service responses, which are not very responsive. So anyway, at this point, that's the good news. Certainly, I will have no problem letting Expedia know that their competitor is working with us, and so, I mean, I'm optimistic. Gary and I need to review, but what I'm even more optimistic about is the timeliness of the communications and responses. So the emails and the phone calls are now being returned, and timely email confirming certain things. So I'm optimistic that we may have an understanding with Airbnb by the end of the week.
Do you anticipate, that's very good news, absolutely, do you anticipate needing any kind of council action to accept the language you're talking about, or you're well within your authority?
Yeah, we're within our authority.
Good.
Yeah.
No reason to delay it.
Agreed.
We want to try to get that cleared up for our residents as quickly as possible. Any questions from the council? Thank you for, is that the only informational report tonight?
And let --
If you want an analysis of the --
No.
No, no, no.
Whatever you're about to say, no. Okay, we'll move on to council reports and comments. Flood control today was introduction of the 2019-20 budget with potential adoption on June 18. League of California Cities update. Do you, anybody have policy reports yet?
No.
Next Thursday.
Next Friday.
Yeah, so several of us are going down to Newport Beach for executive forum, workshop, and policy meetings. I will also be down there a couple days longer for the Board of Directors meeting. That's June 18 through the 22nd, I think, are the total dates.
But the policy committee meetings are the 14th, 13th, and 14th.
Oh, you're going down the week prior.
No, Sacramento, they're in Sacramento.
Oh, okay, that's not Newport Beach.
No.
Have fun.
Yeah.
Lot easier to get to. So we'll all have reports out at our, either the meeting on the 17th, which is our revised special meeting date, or the first meeting in July. Other reports from anybody? Councilmember Muller?
LAFCO met, and we, I think we had a bit of a breakthrough on our, where we're going to go with our sphere of influence policy. This is a big policy for us, and it's been pretty divisive, actually, in the county, the county and the cities, to be quite frank about it. So what the commissioners agreed to yesterday was that we would move forward with creating a roundtable, and we, the policy committee, which I'm on, will come up with what the roundtable will look like, and we will also plan out what kind of questions and the format. And so my goal is to get, everybody's going to make concessions, we're going to arrive someplace near the middle, nobody's going to get everything they want, but we will not be on opposite sides of, you know, where we have to go with this. The biggest problem with LAFCO and CKH, the law we follow, it says that we're in charge of orderly growth, urban growth in the cities, but we're also in charge of maintaining ag and open space. So how do you resolve those things? So we're going to try to figure that out, and so I'm looking forward to the direction.
Nothing to report about things leaking or burning?
There is, I am going to hold off, we're going to have a meeting in a week or two, so no Upper Valley Waste Management report. Stay tuned.
I do want to recognize that along with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Dornbecker and Public Works Director Joe Tegliabashi, we all attended yesterday the Emergency Management Preparedness Summit that was called in part by the governor, the League of California Cities, and our county counterparts. I don't know if either of you wanted to comment on that or not?
Well, I was very glad that we did attend that conference and go to the different breakout sessions, and while a lot of it was very familiar, it was very interesting to hear that some of the representatives from the jurisdictions that had the most impacts, like Paradise and Santa Rosa and Santa Barbara. So it was very instructive in that way, and one of the things that I learned was that the recovery is actually the hardest part of the events. As amazing as that is to consider, because they can be so devastating, but getting through them and over them and past them is the hardest part. So it was very, I found it very helpful and meaningful to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to recognize that Vice Mayor and I met with Superintendent Dr. Rossetti with the Napa Valley Unified School District and members of her senior staff and Board of Directors, or trustees, about the status of the district budget and plans to evaluate principally small schools that would include Yountville Elementary School, any schools below 300 students. They are planning on, I think it's not June 13, but June 20 is possibly the board meeting where they will discuss the small school situation and their financial difficulties. They're already cutting $7 million in their budget this year, but need to cut more to stay out of state receivership because their reserves have dropped to an alarmingly low level. So more news, I, unfortunately, I can't say counting on good news coming forward, but we are in much better communication with the district now, which is very positive, and they're keeping us updated. They're in a bad situation, the numbers don't work for them, and we're hoping to be able to work with them on solutions. Also, I think on a much more positive note, not only is the second vice president of the League of California Cities, but I was able to represent us with members from the governor's office, the Department of General Services, and Housing and Community Development about housing development at the Veterans Home and throughout the state of California, but in particular, they're getting tired of me harping on the possibilities and interests we have here in Yountville. I have another meeting this Monday with the Calvet Undersecretary and the Deputy Director of General Services, along with our local administrator Fred Just, regarding, we're going to review housing potential sites on the campus, just to get a very general view of that, but this is the most encouraging and inclusive group from Sacramento, all of whom have to be involved if we're going to be able to move forward with housing. So I look forward to that meeting and to report out on that. Steve?
You just, following on that, or piggybacking, Planning Director Sandra Liston attended a regional meeting regarding SB2 planning implementation, and we are working on a grant proposal to look at studies to support the feasibility of housing on the Veterans Home Campus. So we're getting some very strong support and assistance from HCD on how to move forward with that, and hopefully, we can use that as a catalyst to also jumpstart, because I think you and I would both agree, trying to get these entities moving and actually understanding some of the specifics they need to be working on can be challenging at times.
The Vice Mayor and I also were on a phone call with staff from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and Association of Bay Area Governments, who were supportive also and actually encouraging us to work with them on that very point, the Senate Bill 2 money, which they said, hey, we'll help you write grants to receive some of that planning money. It's like, okay, we'll do it, even though, yeah, even though this council was very supportive in order to put some feasibility study money forward for all of our housing opportunities, this is really great progress forward, I think. So thank you for that. Any other reports? I just want to recognize again our ad hoc committee, Councilmembers Dornbecker and Durham, for the work that you put in in a very, very short time. We just talked about this two weeks ago, and we were able to execute on this tonight. So thank you for that. Councilmember Durham?
I just have to comment on staff again. One of the main underlying issues throughout this whole county was exactly what you guys put together so well, so thank you very much.
We've already had a member of the city council in Napa ask if we could send our ceremonial flag policy down there for their consideration.
Very good. We will, once we get the appropriate version all cleaned up and put in.
Pass it on to American Canyon, I think they need it now, too.
I do believe that takes care of our business for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our special meeting on six o'clock on Monday, June 17.
So moved.
Whoever pushed the button first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.[1787.21]